Through our way.
There we go. All right. Okay, ready guys? Welcome everyone to the February 13, 2019, the Shoboritz Committee Regular Meeting. Calling the meeting to order at 6 o'clock. The first item on our agenda is Citizens Comments. Are there Citizens comments tonight? Okay. But I do have something I want to share with you about Citizens Comments, even though there aren't any. Because I know that there's been some buzz about this recently on Bolton's social media pages, Facebook pages. And I had a couple of parents reach out because they were concerned about some of the things that were said. So, one of the things I want to share with folks is that public comment is dictated by policy. We don't make policies up. We adopt those policies. The policies that we follow are the ones that are recommended by the Mass Association of School Committees. They're best practice. And the policies are, and one of the things that MASC, Mass Association of School Committees, has said to us repeatedly, year after year after year, is that school committee meetings are not public meetings. They're meetings that are held in public. So, there's a difference in that. That's why when we're debating or discussing something, we don't stop and take comments at that point. We allow comments at the beginning of the meeting. And that is when folks have a chance to say something. In the past, when I first came to this seat, this Citizens Comments were at the end of the meeting, and there were several parents who reached out and said, "It's exhausting. I cannot stay here until 9 o'clock. Is there any way you could move it up?" So, we moved it up. If there's ever an opportunity for people to want to come back and have a comment, just ask to have it put on the agenda. If we're done deliberating and there's been a vote that's been taken, we're done. Taken, that we're done. But feel free to talk to us. We would love to communicate on social media. We can't, and there are a lot of reasons for that. Elaine and Elise and I, although you guys more recently, are on Communication Advisory. There's laws that govern what we can and can't do in public. So, I just want to make sure that people understand when we're -- that's why I read the policies. I ask Kathy when I'm not here to read the policies. We have to, the policies of the district are like the laws of the state. And the policies are based on actual laws of the state. So, if you ever have a question, don't feel that you're being squelched. Let us know and we'll point you in the direction as to why we do it that way. Okay? I have two other updates on the Chair updates. One is to the school committee members, and then dovetail into the community members. I'm up for reelection this May, the middle of May. I've decided to sit this election cycle out, which means I will not be running. School committee members, your cellphones, and anything you text on a cellphone in a public meeting is a public record, so just FYI. But I will not be running this particular cycle. That doesn't mean that I will not be back. And if any of you have worked with me, you know that this district means way more to me than many of the other things I do, even in my professional life. But I wanted to give people the heads up now because Bolton has its process that starts in three weeks. And I want to make sure that anyone who's ever thought about running, anybody who has ideas that they don't like how something's working, or they think it could work another way, that they would go ahead and try it. Just give it a shot. I am willing to talk to anybody who wants information. I'm willing to be a resource for you guys, for you, for anyone, for the period of time that I'm sitting out. And to the community, sitting on the school committee is not what it appears from the outside. It's much more involved. There's a lot of work that we do behind the scenes. But I think it's important to know that if this is something that you may be considering, please do, and know that you do not need to be a finance professional. In fact, for those who have spent their careers in finance, and we've had a couple of them on this committee, you realize that you're going to have to learn a whole new world. It's like going into an entire new industry, and the rules and the laws and the regulations that are required, it's a whole new world. So, you do not need to be a finance professional. You do not need to be an educator. We've got a couple of educators on the committee, which is great. It helps us with perspective. But you really, if you want to, what would be those things? Be open-minded. Be willing to come and collaborate. Be willing to come and learn. This is more of a learning process than it is anything else. But I will share with you that anyone who is interested, please let me know if you have questions. I'm not willing to just walk away from this. It's going to be hard for me, and more to come later. But I feel like in the six years that I've been on this committee, and in the past four years, it has been an immense amount of work. I have little in my professional life. I've always been proud of my work. Like, I throw myself into it. I am more proud of the work that the committees that I've worked with, and the superintendent and new administration that I've worked with have done in the past four years than just about any other professional. And I've done some pretty cool stuff in my professional life. So, I just want to thank all of you, let you all know that I will always be the resource for you until I come back. And then, for anyone in the community who's willing to give this a shot, don't be afraid. I know sometimes it's kind of scary because it seems like people in the community get upset. It's because they don't understand. And if you look at it that way, you're more tolerant. You're willing to give them the information. So, we're going to leave that there. I've talked too much about it, and we're going to move on. We do not have a student representative report tonight, so I'm going to hand it over to the superintendent.
I'm not sure where to go with that.
You don't have, we can just do business as usual. I'll come back with a couple more nuggets later.
I'll do that. So, I'm actually going to start with some sad news. And for those of you that may or may not know, Colin is not here tonight. He's with his, as he calls it, his music family tonight. And that's where he should be. Last night, Joe McCarthy's young son, Colton, quietly passed away, and Colton was seven months old. Joe is a valued, very valued member of our NRHS staff and family. And he's active in every part of our music program and beyond. Most often, when you see Joe at a football game, or at a concert, or anywhere else, he's surrounded by his young family. And most often, he's carrying a child resting on his hip. This is devastating news for, obviously, for the family, for our school family, and for our district family tonight. And although his passing is sudden, Joe and Deanna would like us to know that Colton passed away peacefully. Our hearts are broken tonight, and we've moved in to provide whatever supports we can provide for the McCarthy family, whatever it is that they need right now. We send prayers and healing thoughts to each of them, and we all feel the sadness. It is profound and beyond words. And I just want to add to, you know, I was, Alida and I were talking about it today, and I said, "You know, as a mom who's been through this, you know, when you have a wound on your hand or in your skin, and your time heals, and you see that wound start to heal, and it kind of covers over, and you start to feel a little bit better." I just know that when you lose a child, that wound doesn't heal. It's still there, and there's a void, and there's an emptiness. And there's a hurt that is so deep, so profound. And so, tonight, I just, I just hurt so badly for this family tonight because I absolutely understand it. So, whatever we can do for the family, we will do it. And we so respect and so value everything that Joe brings to our district. Our hearts are with him tonight. We do want to take a minute of silence tonight and think of Colton. Thank you. Moving on.
Moving on.
Superintendent's report, if I can go along.
Yep, please do.
Thank you. So, this topic has come up before, but it's going to come up again, school closures, early dismissal, and lay stars, because we can't have enough news and information about that. I just want to remind everyone, you know, a special thank you to our local DPW partners and district staff for working diligently to stay ahead of our weather during the last several storms. A reminder that the superintendent does not make the decision on their own. I say that because I happened to be somewhere where I overheard somebody who didn't know I was sitting beside them saying, "Oops, that superintendent of ours is from Canada, and we all know she doesn't close, no, no, it has nothing to do with my birthplace." It has to do with the weather. It has to do with the National Weather Service. It has to do with other superintendents. It has to do with all of those kinds of things I want to put out there, but yet, again. And a note too, and I think sometimes this gets lost, and this was really a determining factor for this in the last couple of days, is the difference between Lancaster weather patterns, Bolton, and Stowe can be incredible. And so, the morning, for example, at 4:00, when Rob and I first started our conversation, I think that Lancaster was sitting at 28 degrees, but we were already 33 here and 33 in Stowe. And so, buses could have run in Stowe and Bolton, but the rain was still, as he said, it's still torrential rain. It's pouring, and it's freezing instantly because it's coming to the ground. And the DPW is thinking that they can't keep up with this, and I absolutely get that. So, we have to keep in mind that it's a regional district. Even though it looks okay in one community, it might not be in the other. Remember, we are one community. We are one district. We are one union, one set of contracts. We have to do what's right for, you know, if it's just one community, we have to shut it down. I do want to add a special note, though, to parents and students. I know that it's not convenient. I understand that. And I know that it interferes with learning. I get all of that. But I felt very good about the calls made yesterday. You know, as soon as we left, I mean, we don't leave, our staff doesn't leave until all of the students have been returned home. We get all the calls back in from the busing department that's saying, "Yes, all the children have been returned." And then, we know, okay, now we can leave. We generally wait about another half hour, and we can leave at that point in time. By the time they got to the other, and our staff on the other end of Lancaster heading out, it was starting to get very, very bad visibility. So, we know that we made the right decision. But I know it's an inconvenience, however, it is for the safety of our students and our staff. So, I just want to keep that in mind. Budget, the budget process continues to consume much of, almost most of, our time. We continue to have in-house meetings connected with our town representatives. And it's our hope, and you'll hear that tonight, that by February 27th, which is the next school committee meeting, that we are as close as we can possibly get to the final number, with the exception of maybe some final tweaks. So, you'll see that we've made about a million, a little over a million dollars of cuts this evening that we're going to present to you. Hopefully, by the next February 27th, we're kind of close to where we all need to be for all of our communities, and I'll talk about that a little bit later. Spelling bee, of course, Mr. McGuire is our current residence in all things spelling bee. And you had a lot of fun, didn't you?
We had a lot of fun last week.
Yeah, you did. So, do you want to talk about spelling bee?
Sure. Both the Burbank Middle School and the Florence Sawyer Middle School held their spelling bees last week on Monday and Wednesday evening. I had the privilege of being asked to be the pronouncer at both, which was a lot of fun. It was also a lot of stress, pronouncing a lot of those words. I was tremendously impressed by the number of students who could spell those words, where I struggle to pronounce some of them. So, shout out to Principals Laura Friend and Joel Bates, and Media Specialist Michael Caligari for organizing and coordinating the events. We had some great spellers, some great words, and two winners from both Burbank and Sawyer, as well as two alternates. And I'm still trying to figure out how they can spell off Weederzane, because I still can't. But they were both two great nights, a lot of fun there. And then, the next piece is, and I gave all of you at the school committee kind of the handout tied to our upcoming professional development. On March 8th, we are in full swing and planning for our visit from George Karros, who's the author of The Innovator's Mindset. He's coming to do the keynote speech first thing in the morning on March 8th. We are then going to be broken up into some Ignite speeches from several of our workshop presenters. Our State Education Commissioner, Jeff Riley, is coming to visit. During his visit, we're going to be showcasing over 20 showcases in our upper and lower gyms at the high school, everything from running drones to jam board sessions, our robotics team, our music groups. We're going to be showcasing a lot of how we empower students in the district. And then, in the afternoon, we're going to be moving into some choice workshops on empowering students. And right now, we have over 30 workshops being presented in the afternoon. So, it is turning out to be a great day. That handout in front of you is how we are registering people. We are also putting it out to area and districts, school districts and schools. So, we've got a lot of registrants coming in from outside of the district, and we invite all of you to be a part of the day, or all of the day if you can. So, we'd love to have you, but it's shaping up to be a really exciting day of learning empowerment.
I'm looking forward to so much of that. I'm really looking forward to the Ignite speeches. I'm really looking forward to seeing the demonstrations. I mean, of course, George Karros too, and the commissioner. But all of the other stuff looks so interesting, and really, it's going to be great. So, yeah, so I just want to also reiterate, we'd love for any or all of you to come and join us that day. So, feel free to, just let us know.
And the hashtag on that, because we do have a hashtag, is #NashobaEmpowersLearning. So, on Twitter and on social media, we've got a hashtag tied to the day. So, check it out.
Awesome, thanks. And the last thing for me, technology tasting. I know that I've reported before that we did a, we being the operative word, I did not do this, but technology tasting happened. It was Gary Kozlowski and Alida, his last name is missing under number five, if we could just add that, please. And Greg Newton, our teaching and learning leadership, and the staff that was involved. So, we did this at Florence Sawyer this time. It was great. It was just every bit as good as it was over at Lancaster. And it was one of those moments where you know you were trying to replicate pockets of excellence, and that was one of those moments. And it was just a lot of fun on their PD day. So, hats off to everyone that was involved in the technology tasting at Florence Sawyer. And that's it for me for tonight.
Perfect, thank you. All right, we're going, any questions for Superintendent Clinchy, Assistant Superintendent Todd? No? Okay. Let's move into new business. So, we've got two trip approvals. So, we'll ask the principal of the high school to come forward and share what you'd like us to do.
So, there are, this is a monthly, a monthly visit.
Getting good at this.
Aren't those policies awesome?
And I'm reminded of just how awesome they are, everyone. First of all, let me just thank Alida Masterson, because this paperwork, I think, for all of us at the high school, we're, it's a new way of doing business. And so, following up on all the documents, and we so appreciate the reminders, the help that comes from this office in order to make sure that this all gets done. There's two field trips here tonight. They, Maria are going to talk about German trip approval. The first one is the Student Council trip. It's a state conference down the Cape every year for student councils across Massachusetts. Really, it's a way to examine the various ways in which student voice is being promoted at different high schools across the state. We've got two advisors, Moore Bailey and Kim Early, who have really reinvigorated our student council this year. They're taking, they would like to take eight students down with them to the Cape, March 6th through the 8th, returning on the 8th. So, it is a brief but jam-packed trip down the Cape. I don't know if there are any specific questions you have based on the paperwork in front of you.
So, we need someone, does anybody have any questions about the paperwork and the trip? And if not, then I need somebody to, you've got a question, somebody, Lynn?
I'm just wondering, if the students are driving themselves, is that an issue?
Are they, I don't know if they've got a driver's license.
That's a great point. We were back and forth on this with the advisors. It is the seniors, the sophomores are going out with the advisor, but the seniors are going down, driving down themselves. We, as we have done in the past, will monitor the weather, because it could be kind of tricky, and we want them dropping down in something that we experienced yesterday. So, last year, we amended it because the weather was bad.
That's right, I remember that, yeah.
So, we came up with a different plan, and we'll keep an eye on that. Because that's, that's a concern. I mean, they are seniors in a matter of months. You know, they'll be out of school, they'll be doing that on their own. So, we don't want to, and they can handle the responsibility, but we want to monitor to make sure it's tencey.
I think though, Lynn, just not for discussion for this particular trip, but I think it, I think it's a broader discussion at some point in time that we might have, not for this particular trip, but a broader discussion, like maybe once budget season is over, we can have some discussion on it.
Well, this is an MASC trip for student council. That's cool. That's really cool. So, we need somebody to move eight students and two chaperones attending the MASC Student Council Conference on March 6th through March 8th at the Resort and Conference Center in Hyannis, Massachusetts. Thank you. Do I have a second, Elise? Any questions, any comments? All those in favor? It's unanimous.
Thank you.
We've got a process down now, right? But you can't go anywhere because you have another one.
It's only too cheap.
But we, no, we can move another chair forward. We'll do the minimum.
Sounds good.
He's like, "I'm out of here."
And we ask that you, nicest youth, Nathan.
Nice to see you guys again.
And we'll ask you.
Oh, you poor guy.
That you introduced your guest. But I'm going to tee it up just a little bit, if I can, Nate, just offer a couple of things here. This is a much bigger trip, and this is one of those things, again, that this is the first time it's coming before a school committee, however, this trip is run for five other times, I believe, Nathan?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. And so, I think in all fairness to Nathan, he, you know, we've really put him through the wringer. I say that with all affection, Nate. But, you know, because we were looking for a lot of information, because this is a big deal. It is a big trip. And I, all the credit to you, Nathan, for consistently coming back and providing more and more pertinent data for us to work with. And Todd has been incredibly involved, working with Nathan on this, and so, I want to make sure that I thank you, Todd, too. So, this started off as almost something that was kind of under the radar, that nobody would have picked up. And then, in all fairness to you, you came forward and said, "Hey, you know what? I've been doing this all along, but I think this is one of those things that needs to go before school committee now with us doing the fresh approach." So, Nathan, thank you for your patience. And then, we've also had a big meeting around this table a couple of weeks ago, where he came in, and we did some follow-up on that. So, with that, maybe give a little bit of background, introduce your guest, because we all know you, but that's the first time, that's the first time that you've come before us tonight, too. So, talk a little bit about the history. I bet you a lot of people around the table might already know you, to be honest with you, but.
I don't think so. Maybe just two of us.
Okay. Okay. So, Nathan, I'm going to turn it over to you. Give a little bit of history and why we're doing this tonight.
Well, thanks again for having us and nice to see you guys again. We met last fall for a field trip to URI first and later. This is Maria Davis. She's my co-chaperon for the German exchange, and we are here today to discuss the German exchange. A little background on it, the Shobor exchange is something that started before I was at the Shobor. Mike Hallard, you may or may not remember, he was a German teacher before I was there, and I had an exchange with a different school in Germany. I've been in the district for 11 years. I had, in my second year, we started doing the exchange with a school called Wihheim, Wihheim-Gmasium. So, if your hands, Germany, and Munich's down here, Berlin's up here, it's kind of down in this area. So, we are from Wihheim to Munich, about the same distance as Bolton to Boston. So, as far as communities, they're similar in that, in that region. The difference between an exchange and a trip, some of the high school sometimes does trips to a different country, or a couple of different countries, in which the schools stay in hotels and go here, and go here, and go here, and kind of every day, there's a different program in which the students are on buses and moving a lot. With an exchange, it's a literal exchange in the sense that German students come to the United States and stay with our local families for two weeks, then our students go back and stay with those families for two weeks. And that's what we've done for the past, we've done five times over the course of the past 10 years. The exchanges have taken place usually married to one of the vacations, either February vacation or April vacation, or in the summertime. The timing on that sometimes depends on what their school schedule looks like. Every year, their vacation schedule changes, so sometimes they're available when we are, sometimes they're not available, and we can't work accordingly with that. We work with an organization called GAP, the German-American Partnership Program. That's a program that's in part sponsored by the German government and the Gerda Institute. The Gerda Institute is a German language institute in Boston, helps facilitate German culture, language, and other activities. They were part of, they were one of the sponsors for the URI STEM Weekend that we went on earlier this fall, and there's another upcoming one this, this spring, which is a follow-up to the STEM one in Chicago for Sustainability, Sustainability Summit. So, they're involved with kind of providing the structure and the support for German teachers to plan exchanges for their students. What that looks like is there's different trainings that they give for the teachers. They help with coordinating and finding different schools. They help with insurance. They help with booking flights. There's different outlines for different exchanges. You can take and kind of put together what fits for you. Part of what makes an exchange different from a trip is we have to have 10 days in school. And that's part of the, there's an educational backbone to the exchange, which makes it different from a trip. And I think for my students, that's where one of the bigger values comes in, is where they have a lot of face-to-face time with families in schools, and really get to a kind of behind-the-scenes, more personal experience than you would if you went to a different city each time, which I think is also a valuable program, but that's not what I offer with the German exchange. You have some information in front of you? You may have digital copies of this, too? Would you like me to walk?
I don't think they need to go through a lot of, I think it's one of those trips that's with some regularity, you know, every other year. And I think in part because it almost takes you here to plan, in all fairness, you know? I think, Marie, you might want to give a little bit of, you know, your perspective, because I found that really useful when we were sitting around the table, you know, a couple of weeks ago, and just hearing how you spoke about this trip, because you've been on it before. So, maybe speak to that.
Yes, so, I've actually been involved in these exchanges from all different aspects. Over the years, I've hosted four different German students. I've sent my own son to Germany twice. I've been on two different exchanges as a chaperone, a co-chaperon, and I've also hosted what will be a total of four different chaperones. So, I have a little bit of experience from all the different angles of these exchange programs. And I just can't speak highly enough of the value that the students get from being able to be part of the family, live that lifestyle, use the language that they're learning in school, and expand it to the real world, see how other cultures live, and get the appreciation that they do from being part of that experience.
Great, thank you. And Nathan, I think one of the other things that I found interesting when we were talking was that the fact that this is a school that you continue to remain in contact with. So, it's not like you're flying to a different school each time. This is really the same, the same group of people that you're dealing with. And if memory serves me right, too, and then, we'll turn it over to school committee for questions, but I think you said, it was either Maria or Nathan, I can't remember, that some of the families have gone, like, sent more than one of their children on this. So, maybe speak to that a little bit.
So, we've had a couple, say, multi-generational exchange participants, and also families that have had the same students. The Shriver family is one that comes to mind, where they've had two of their sons both went and stayed with the same family, the Hertz, the Conlins, the Ensmans, the, sorry, there's a number, there's a number of different families that have come and participated, whether all the students have come on the exchange on both sides. And that's helped to kind of tighten the connection between our town, our towns, and their town, where some of the parents now have gone to go visit the families when they've done to Europe before. And so, you're kind of having a, an exchange that takes place between 20 students and 20 students, where it grow to take place between families and families, and then towns and towns. And I think that that is where some of the strength in an exchange lies, more than a trip, where it's a trip here in hotel, and maybe you go back and make friends with the majorities, but you might not have that same connection. And I think that this is the type of thing that really opens up perspectives to students.
Okay, great. And even on our part, because we've established that relationship with the chaperones as well. It's the same chaperones, basically, every year. You know, I went to Germany this past summer and stayed with the woman who I had hosted and then who hosted us. And so, even that relationship between the chaperones makes it a lot more secure for everyone. We know them, they know us very well. The families, you know, really get to know each other. And I think there's that sense of trust that we have between our, you know, participating groups.
I have a question for you folks, and this is probably a nit, but, so, if you're leaving on the 17th, but school lets up, what if we have some snow days? on the seventeenth, but school lets up, what if we have some snow days? Do they miss their finals and make them up when they come back?
So, we did this before. We've done, this is the fifth exchange. We've done one in February, two in April, and one in the summer. And last time when we went into the summer, we ran into snow days as well. And that was understanding with the students that you need to be in good academic standing to participate in the exchange. And if you have a conflict with your finals, and you have to work with your teachers to figure that out before grades are due. And that may mean taking them online. That may mean doing something where they send it remotely. It may be something where they have to take it before they leave. But that's kind of an understanding that both the students and with the parents, they're responsible for any days they miss. If we were to go in February, April, the same thing. We usually miss three to four days on each side of the vacation. And whatever work you miss, the students are responsible for that.
Okay. Anybody have questions? I'm sure you do. No? And you gave us quite a bit of information. You've been doing this for a while. I appreciate the fact that you're both going. You poor, poor man. But you're like, you're blazing a trail here. This is so important.
I think one of the, so, we do a, a program around Christmas called German Act in a Chöbe Day, where I send out an email to different students that I've had that are now alumni and studying German somewhere, wherever they are, and invite them to come back. And we have a panel with our current students. In this past year, I think we had a dozen students come back, which is huge, first of all, like a dozen college students come back, and they spend the entire day in class doing a Q and A panel with, with my current students, in which they were speaking German back and forth, and then asking, you know, "What are you doing with German? Where are you with German?" And all twelve of those students that came back are all former participants on the exchange, and they're all currently doing something with German, whether that be grad school, or undergrad, or one of them's working for the Gerda Student D C right now. And so, they've really spread their wings in part through this experience, or at least this experience has helped kind of given a lift underneath their, their interest. And so, I think there's a lot of value in this that continues to pay back into our, our history.
All right. Are we good? Are you good?
Yeah.
I'm going to raise my hand.
I know.
I'm giving you the option.
And I could just, no, they, Nate did, spent a lot of work into this trip and the communication with Marie, Nate, and Paul, the high school, and us, and knowing that they, we want these trips, and the you folks want these trips to go before you folks, and it is about communication with you folks and the entire community, I think. So, hats off to these guys, because we did raise the bar significantly for these trips, and there was a lot of details that, you know, we asked them for, and they certainly came through in presenting it to you. So, thank you.
You did a great job with this. You really did, Nathan.
So, we need someone to move that. Fourteen high school students and two chaperones will, hmm, will be going to Wilhelm, Germany, Salzburg, Austria, Munich, Germany, from June seventeen, twenty nineteen, to July third, twenty nineteen, on an exchange trip. And the school committees were looking for someone to move that.
So...
Need a second? Thank you. Notice how I looked at both of you. Any questions, comments? Everybody good to go? All those in favor? It's unanimous? Thank you. Thank you so much. Have a wonderful time. Take care of our kids.
The Germans are also coming here for the two weeks.
The Germans.
The Germans are coming.
This is German students are coming?
They're coming here the two weeks before April break, so if there's anything you want, meet them.
We won't force them to come, the school committee.
I'll ask that on more.
Thank you. Thanks, guys. Okay. The two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year calendar. Oh, we're going to have Anne-Marie Stoichard, Director of HR, come up. Anne-Marie, please tell us what the heck is going on.
Absolutely.
And when you tell us what's going on, would you please share with us what the process is, because the school committee's heard about it from the community.
I sure will.
Thank you.
Now, Anne-Marie, I know that, was, who else sat, was there anybody else that's sitting here tonight that wants to sit at the table, too? I know Sean, you were also, you were also on the committee.
Are there any teachers that were on the committee?
Yes, there were.
Were they? Are they here?
No.
No, they're not.
That's a shame.
Ready?
Yeah, we're ready.
Thank you for the opportunity to present to your consideration a proposed calendar for the nine, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year. I put a lot of thought into what would be the best way to present this to you, because I know there's been some feedback from parents expressing concerns, and what they've heard is in this proposed calendar. Our primary function as a school district, of course, is to provide the best education possible for our students. And our superintendent encourages us, or maybe I should say insists, that we be student-centered in everything that we do. That said, our educational philosophy also includes weighing the needs of our families and our member communities, because they're our partners in the education of their children. The calendar we're submitting for you tonight does both. It's educationally sound, and it also addresses the concerns of parents who are juggling the multiple priorities of family and work. The best way to present this, I decided, is to explain briefly the calendar process, then tell you about some of the conversations we had in our committee meeting, and then to go over the specifics of the calendar. But first, I want to recognize the work of the calendar committee members, which is the committee that came to consensus on this calendar. It's actually called the Superintendent's Advisory Committee on the School Calendar. Many of the members have served for many of the year, and I'm grateful for them for giving their time and for their thoughtful contributions to the process. I'm going to read their names, because if I don't, I'm afraid that I'll lapse enough and forget someone. Representing the parents, age of the communities, Sherri Kotoski represents the parents from Stowe. Stacy Kramer represents the parents from Lancaster. And Nicole Thomas represents the students from... The educators on our committee, Kim Bolus, Kayla Kaufman, Hannah Kaplan, Michelle Kelly, and Dorothy Baraka. And administrators, Tom McQuire, who's rocking out on me.
No. Actually, we're just, we're just suggesting that Paul join us, because Paul was also on the committee.
Oh.
Todd McQuire, Cynthia Larson, principals, Paul DiDomenico, and Sean O'Shea, and Assistant Principal Caitlin Anjulo. Also, special thanks to Alita, who after the committee's work is done, formats the calendar into the document that you have before you. The calendar creation process is governed both by the N R E A's Unit A contract and also by the School Committee Policy I C slash I C A. The teacher's contract calls for the committee to meet and provide a recommendation for the following year's contract of calendar to the superintendent. From there, the school committee policy kicks in, which calls for the superintendent to submit her calendar to the committee for approval, and that's where we are now. So, the calendar committee has reached consensus on the calendar, consented its recommendation to the superintendent, and now the superintendent is submitting her calendar for you to approval. So, that's the process. The calendar committee started out with what we've come to call the bones of the calendar. A lot of what's in a calendar is done for us, because we know, some of it's a given. We know when the holidays are going to fall, and we know that the holidays really give rise to where the February vacation is going to be, where the April vacation is going to be, and to a large extent, where the winter break is going to be. But as with all things, we're always trying to make improvements, and this year, that came up surrounding early release professional development days. The early release professional development days are the days where the students spend their half a day of school, and they leave and the staff stay behind to participate in professional development activities. I can tell you that there was no consideration given to changing from early release to late starts for the elementary and the middle schools. What was suggested was that the early release professional development days might be more effective if they were on a day other than Fridays, and the day that was put forward was Wednesdays. There was discussion about that, and there were considerations put forward in the meetings, both in favor of making that change, and in favor of making no change. Generally, the fact is that we're in favor of a switch to Wednesdays, where that the teachers like the idea of being able to implement what they learn in a P D session the very next day in their classrooms. The short time between learning and implementation strengthens the practice, while waiting from Friday till the next Monday makes it less likely to stick because of delay in fully practicing what they just learned. Also, people aren't frightened for learning on Friday afternoons. Our P D is very high-quality, and in many cases, it's equal in rigor and in contact, in content, to a graduate-level course. That requires a lot of cognitive capacity, which is in short supply on Friday afternoons. It's part of the reason why graduate schools don't offer classes, very few classes, if any, on Friday afternoons and evenings. They recognize that people aren't geared up to learning at that time. Finally, early release P D days on Friday are in effect. For many teachers, a full day of instruction fit into a half-day of school. Recession is often shorter on those days or nonexistent, and some of the teachers go without their specials or their prep period. So, as a practical matter, especially at the elementary level, by the time P D starts on Friday afternoons, many of our teachers have taught the equivalent of five full days within that condensed time, and have cognitively topped out. The reasons that were put forward in the committee for retaining the Fridays are generally centered around parental concerns of, sort of, in date, childcare issues. It's easier for parents to get time off from work on Friday than on other days, so they're available to be home to their children. Permission to work from home is generally granted by employers on Fridays more easily than on other days of the week. And some parents like to use the extra hours on Friday to get a jump on their weekend plans, especially if those plans involve travel. So, the two major interests put forward by the committee members and their constituents through the committee members, there were two. One is to hold P D at a time when the educators are best prime for learning, and able to most effectively put that learning into use, and hold P D at a time when parents are thus able to arrange for childcare for their children while they work. The calendar that's before you tonight addresses both of those interests. We split the early release P D days between Wednesdays and Fridays on a trial basis for next year. This will give us an opportunity to see whether adding midweek P D increases its effectiveness over P D that's held on Fridays. In other words, whether the change in the date makes any difference. And to address the childcare concerns, Rayne Rego, the coordinator of our extended learning day program, will offer an early release program so parents can access convenient, onsite, high-quality, and low-cost care for the Wednesday afternoons when they need to be at work. A regular extended day program already runs on, on early release days, but this will be separate for those children who aren't already enrolled in the extended learning program, to fulfill the needs of the parents who would normally either take a day off or work from home on the Friday Y R P days. There are a lot of details that still need to be worked out, but the gist of it is that there will be a certain number of slots in each community and a program of appropriate activities offered, but a sum that will just cover the costs. There was also brainstorming around the idea of whether there might be some high school students who are in need of community service hours, who could get those hours by assisting our employees with that program. This program would also be subject to review next year to see whether it makes a difference in whether it's easier for parents faced with the conflicting imperatives of family and work. We recognize that change is hard, which is why we agreed to do this for one year on a trial basis to see if it meets our two interests. And again, our two interests are increased effectiveness of our P D, and the second, assisting parents who need to arrange for childcare if they need to work on midweek or early release days. Except for that issue, the calendar that's before you has the school year starting for staff on the Tuesday before Labor Day. As is usually the case, the staff will come in for two days, and then the students will return on Thursday of that week, which will be August twenty ninth. Thanksgiving will again be a three-day break, the day before Thanksgiving, Thanksgiving itself, and the day after Thanksgiving. The calendar being proposed starts the winter break on Monday, December twenty-third. The twenty-fourth, which is a holiday for many of our employees, is a Tuesday, and the committee saw value in beginning the vacation date earlier rather than bringing everyone in on a Monday before the holiday starts. And then we'll also provide not just one additional day of travel, but really people will be able to start their travel, if that's their plans, on the twentieth, which is the Saturday, you know, they'll go to school on Friday, then they can, the twentieth will start their vacation day period. It just seemed to make good sense. The February and April vacations will be as is typical during the weeks of the Presidents' and Patriots' Day holidays, and there are fall parent-teacher conferences scheduled district-wide, and another set in the spring for pre-八大 only. There are the usual late starts at the high school for professional development. Happy, happy graduation will be celebrated for the class of twenty twenty on Sunday, June seventh, and the last day of school will be June fifteenth, if there are no school days. Massachusetts law requires us to add five days at the end of the calendar for snow days, which we put on last day if we have five snow days, at June twenty-second. The calendar gives us our one hundred eighty-day mandated student days, one hundred eighty, one hundred sixty-eight for the senior class, and fulfills our contractual obligations for one hundred eighty-four days for the staff. It also meets the policy and state requirements for time on learning. Before I ask any questions, I want to point out that the calendar is practically perfect in every way. It's right down here, though.
It's on the board.
Down here are the dates that are the days that Rayna will run her early release half-day program on those Wednesdays. The date, day nineteen, that was a glitch in the, but, but Alita has fixed that. So, those days, and plus, if you don't, if you want to write them in on your chart, they're the red-colored days on the calendar. So, do you have any questions?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, cool.
Um, I'm just going to ask you something, but I'm not going to ask that, because it's, doesn't need to be said. I'm just really disappointed that the school committee got... How did we get blindsided? I don't believe that you did that, but we got completely blindsided. And I would assume that the meetings, if the process is you folks work on it, then it goes to the superintendent, and we don't even see it, and then it comes to us, it is destructive what happened, because people were really upset, and we didn't have the information. Can you please enlighten us? Because I know I was going to leave it alone, but it's like, it's not right.
I can. And, and I know people had their hair on fire. We had our first meeting, and we discussed all the things that we discussed, but we didn't finalize the calendar until the second meeting. So, the things that we, there was a lot that went around, a lot of brainstorming, a lot of talking about this, that, and the other thing. But then at that meeting, we told them to keep, keep it under wraps, because...
Told who?
The, the calendar committee members.
Okay.
Because it's only fair that you see the calendar as proposed by the superintendent. And that's assuming that the calendar, that the superintendent brings to us the same calendar as we give to her. She could have made some changes.
I could have made some changes as well, so...
So, we asked them not to say anything. In the meantime, though, between the fir-, this is the way I think happened, in between the first and the second meeting, there was conversation in the community, and there was some information that was out there that was incorrect, like the late starts for the elementary and middle school.
Right.
Didn't happen, you know. So, I think that, I think probably it was exacerbated by us telling them after the second meeting not to say anything, because we wanted out of respect.
Because they're adults? I'm sorry. I, I, I'm so sorry. I, you know what, and maybe I feel unfettered, but I am so frustrated by this. I, I think that when somebody makes a commitment to devote their time, and there are rules and mores that you need to follow, and you can't, then maybe you need to think about, perhaps this isn't something you really want to do, because it's destructive. It's not us I'm worried about. We're used to it. It's the rest of the community members that have no idea what's going on, and they're hearing things that are not accurate, and then these things grow into like monsters under the bed. So, appreciate what you did. I really hope that next year, when you're selecting the people in the committee, you're very, you scrutinize who you're going to put on the committee, because this is a level of trust. I do have some other questions, though.
I apologize if that'll happen.
No, it's not your, it's not your issue, so, and people know who they are. On the half-days, I have, and I'm not going to weigh in on one way or the other, but there are only a certain number of slots. Is that what you said?
Well, we haven't, we haven't, the...
Yeah.
We haven't worked that out yet.
So, here's my thought on that. Like, first of all, education, I, I look at you guys, you're the, you're the experts, right? And so, it's a very compelling case, but it makes me, it makes me kind of hesitate a bit if, because I, I, I work, I work from home on Fridays. So, I understand everybody's position on this. But if there's a certain number of slots, it's kind of like, it feels like the way kindergarten was when there was a lottery.
Well, except if I could just...
Yeah, please do.
Except these would, this would be signed up for in advance for each of the Wednesdays, so we would know if there is, we would know what the...
Oh, so you wouldn't turn people away?
No, no, no. We would put on more, put on more staff.
And when, how is the cost of that covered?
Well, the people, the people would pay, but we would not look into make money, you know, on this, whatever our cost is. You do the Gozinta, and then that's how much you need to...
And it's just for the half-days. And those are for the half-days.
So, it's like, what, three, four hours? It's just those four half-days in the afternoons. That's all it is.
Is it enough space that nobody gets turned away?
I don't, yeah, and we're not sure how many parents will take advantage of that or not. I mean, so, until we try, try this, we have no idea.
We thought it was a win-win. You know, we can try it, see if it works, see if, see if the Wednesdays work better than the Fridays, and also see if this...
Or see if it's a nice balance, if we've achieved a balance with this. I mean, you know, I think that that was our... Or see if it's a nice balance, if we've achieved a balance with this. I mean, you know, I think that that was our hope, you know. And I appreciate too being, I mean, you were very good about keeping me in the loop at every, at every step. I, like, I'm just going to share Chairman Moscow's frustration. I was very, very disappointed. And in part, and it's not a case of protecting the school committee, but it wasn't fair to our school committee that this generated all kinds of buzz out there before. They, they didn't even see the calendar. They had no, and especially so much misinformation got out there that it was just so wrong and so disappointing. So I, I just wanna reaffirm my own, my own views.
I do have another question. Late starts at the high school, you only want six again? I mean, you've got, we've got late starts for, it looks like finals and midterms. But PD late starts?
Well, we recognize that it's, it's an imposition, that it's an outlier, so to speak, to the rest of the district's schedule. So, you know, we can certainly...
We can add more, no, no.
We can always, we always want to add, yeah.
Use some time, and, and I think it's very generous of the district for that to be a consideration.
So, thank you for that. So Lynn, some of these late starts are because the kids have, when the kids have finals, there's no PD those mornings, is there?
No.
Right, so, so like this week, like this week, right?
Yeah.
And then this week, those are all because of finals, right? So you can't count those as late starts, but I guess the reason I'm asking is because for several years it was like, we need 2,000 late starts at the high school, and it was kind of overwhelming. So I'm kind of happy to see that you've kind of settled at a place with the PD late starts where it's not overwhelming. Because it was like the kids were out more than they were in, you know, every month.
I think we've had a lot of really rich discussion around that, and I think that we, we always remain open. I think that if Principal DeDomenico was to come forward perhaps next year and say, you know what, we've got a couple of different things that we really want to focus on, can we add an extra PD start or two? I think we would come forward with that. We would feel comfortable to be open to come forward.
So, thank you for preserving Thanksgiving three-day weekend. Appreciate the, what you did for the winter break. I'm gonna ask for questions from the floor, or from the floor, but, but one thing I would suggest to you guys, I'm gonna throw it out there, is not to make a decision now. Let's take the information that we've received, the discussion on the childcare support, go back to the communities and see what they have to say about it. I think it's only fair if the educators are bringing it forward. And then, you know, you formulate your opinion based on what you're hearing, what the sound educational recommendation is, and then what our community members are. So that's my recommendation, but I would like to hear, Susan?
I had a question about whether or not the late starts have always been on Wednesday, and if you, if that...
It used to be.
They've always been on Wednesday?
They used to be. They moved a couple of years ago to Friday. They used to always be on Wednesday.
No, you talked about the late starts.
Oh, oh, late starts, I'm sorry.
Yes, I'm assuming they had last year, they were scheduled on Wednesdays when it came in, so then we moved those forward.
And I wonder if their success, like as a midday PD thing, factored into the decision to switch the pilot data midweek also? Was that a part of the discussion? Was there any connection between the two?
I don't, I don't think that there was any connection, no.
That would've been brilliant, really.
I know, but, but it helps. Did an informal poll like one morning to my, the State Association of School Personnel Administrators, which is a thing, has a list, and I put out there and I said, on your half-day professional development days, what day of the week do you have it? And I think in the, in a couple of hours before, I had to run off and do something else, there were 14 people who responded. Nine of them did it on Wednesdays, one on Tuesday, two on Thursday. And then besides us, there were two who did it on Friday, one was gonna change this year to also to a Wednesday. So Wednesday seems to be like, seems to be the most popular.
Okay.
That was gonna be my question, was what other districts do, and it seems like we were, I, I thought that I had the sense that we were probably a loner in doing Fridays, but thanks for confirming that.
Yeah, appreciate that. Mike?
So, a couple of questions. The first one is just a confirmation. You said of the five administrators, five educators, and the three parents that were on the committee, it was a consensus?
Yes.
The draft proposal, the calendar was a consensus, okay.
Except that the day that we, the second day, one of the, one of the parents wasn't able to make that meeting, so she didn't happen to be at that meeting, but everyone else was there and it was consensus. And I did have a conversation with her.
Okay, understood. So, I think that there is, there is the potential for families having to shift, what it sounds like potentially twice, because this is trial, then they would have to shift for the upcoming draft calendar. And if it doesn't work out, they would have to potentially shift back. Does that make, does that sound right? So adjusting schedules to accommodate the half-days?
In a year's time, Mike, right? Because we would run it for a year.
Correct.
Do, do the assessment, and the calendar committee would reconvene and take a look at the information, some data points, and then decide this could work well.
And if it didn't, there would have to be a shift, another adjustment, okay. So you mentioned that we would evaluate, as a district, we would evaluate the efficacy of the Wednesday half-days after that first year. How are we gonna measure that?
Well, that's something that needs to be determined, but what we did do, because it won't be next year this time, it will be this time next year, not at the end of next year. So we took the first four Wednesdays and did the first four early release professional development days, and did two Wednesdays and two Fridays, so we will have had two of each by the time the calendar committee gets back together again. And I imagine there'll be input from the administrators and from the, if somebody has a great way to, to measure that, you know, then we'll, between now and then, come up with what that great way is and do that.
Yeah, I think that metric is gonna be important if it's implemented.
This is a little bit anecdotal, the literacy consultants that we've been working with for the last few years have provided some feedback about, you know, the, the work they're doing on Fridays, and we'll continue some work with them next year, so we'll be able to ask them if they're seeing some different engagement and things like that too. So that'll be somewhat anecdotal, but an outsider's perspective.
When do you need, I'm sorry?
No, I just had a quick point. One of the things too that's come up a couple of times is can the calendar be done earlier? And maybe, Anne-Marie, just speak about that, because, you know, I certainly understand those parents that would like to have it in the month of December rather than early February. But we ran up against other issues, so can you speak to that, please?
We do. Even this year, we had our first meeting, I think it was mid-January. And it wasn't until the day before our first meeting that Paul was able to confirm the day for the high school graduation, because it's like planning a wedding, you know, you have to get the venue. And we didn't find out until the 11th hour whether we were gonna even been able, be able to get that day for the high school graduation. And that drives the train a little bit, because the seniors have got 168 days and they count and da-da-da-da. So there's that, there's that part of it. I, I think we're, I think we're in line. I know that there might be some districts that do it earlier, but I, I think we're in, right in the thick of what most districts do, because we've had, just during this whole process, we got correspondence from several other communities who were wondering, they were working on their calendars and wondering what we were thinking about for our spring full-day professional development day. Maybe with an eye of collaboration of some kind, they probably thought maybe we could do something exciting. My cat and George Cora would come again and they were gonna hang along with us again. So this is, this is, this is the time, although there are some that probably would do it earlier.
When do you need an answer? When do you need an answer?
Whenever you're ready to get it to us, the school committee policy says that we need to present it to you by March 1st, but it doesn't say when you have to vote on it.
Okay.
We have a meeting on...
Can we do it, Lynn, and then Elise?
Oh, mine's just real quick. I mean, just looking at this, I, thank you. It just seemed like every time I turned around, it was a half-day or a day off, and it was really irritating. But you've got actually like five full weeks of school in September. It's great. We didn't have, you had like one September last year and one October. It looks tighter than it was.
The committee works hard on that, you know, especially they keep in mind the MCAS dates and, you know, they factor in one of the, one of the Jewish High Holidays, and, I mean, there's a lot that goes into it. And the committee is very thoughtful, you know, about preserving those chunks, those chunks of time.
Four weeks, thank you.
Don't make me say that.
Sure, I just wanted to jump off the, the metrics piece and the data piece, because I do think that will be really important, you know, if, if we sort of decide to do this, this trial run of this calendar. I would really like to see potentially like, even if it's just really informal survey of the parents that do take advantage of the extended day early-release programs and, you know, sort of getting a little bit of a sense from how many parents actually participate in that and, and, you know, how that helped them out or didn't help them out. And, you know, just having a, a more formal way of collecting parent input. I'm sure we'll hear about it on school committee from people that wanna, but, that wanna, you know, share their thoughts if we were to do this and pilot it, but it would be nice to hear sort of at that point next year when we're making these decisions. You know, oh my God, everybody hated it, right down to the teachers, or the teachers loved it and here's why. And, you know, surprisingly, parents thought they were gonna hate it, but it ended up being okay. Like, all of that will just be so helpful in helping us decide next year what happens.
Elise, to your point, particularly this year with Raina coming on, she's done a fantastic job surveying for all of the new programming of parents that she's, that she's implemented.
Yeah.
Particularly that, you know, she's offering a program next week during February break as well as the April break. And she's been very good at presenting a lot of that feedback already in terms of what might work for next year and what might not work for next year, so that's certainly something we could incorporate there. And then Mike, to your question, in terms of metrics, teaching and learning after every PD day, we solicit feedback from teachers. You know, it tracks attendance, it tracks their, you know, their participation, it tracks where they were. We, we lean feedback from them in terms of, you know, did this particular venue work for you, you know, this week? And so we get a lot of metrics back to, so that we can then inform our next PD day.
So can I, can I ask a question about that? Does that, does that mean that feedback in the past has, is what's driving these proposed changes? So past feedback on Friday PDs have driven us to consider doing the Wednesday something that's come up.
I've been on the calendar committee three to four years, and a lot, it sounds like I'm on it for a while too. So, and, and it has been a discussion from, from the educators a lot about shifting it to another time. And as I said, outside presenters have even kind of, they have commented the uniqueness of Fridays. So it's been an ongoing discussion for years, and I think the committee just looked at some ways to take a step forward and to see if it, you know, to pilot it, and still look to see if it would work and get some feedback before the committee starts again. So it wasn't a new thought this year.
Elaine, sorry. Elise, Elaine? Alida's not getting in the middle of this.
So I have a couple of questions. One kind of works into the other. The first is about consistency. So I feel like this might be a situation where you try to do a balance to make everyone happy, where in the end it might make no one happy. I know as a parent how I feel about my kid transitioning in and out and having a tough time in transitions. One day it might be Wednesday, and then you gotta go get activities afterwards, the next time, next month it's Friday. And then when you're including K through eight, it looks like there's a Thursday in there, and then two more Wednesdays for conferences. So I was wondering from an educator's perspective, is there any information about how this, how having a half-day in the middle of the week will affect the kids' schedules and transitions and how it will affect their educational experience?
I actually had a conversation with Joan DeAngelis about this because, to see, because, you know, it came forward that there will be some children who like lose their stride, you know, if there's a break in the midweek. And she said that for every child that loses their stride in the midweek, there's probably another child who benefits from the break, you know, midweek. So she said, really, you know, children are all different and some, you know, some would benefit from one, from having the break, and some would benefit from having the consistency. So she, you know...
Can you folks tell us what the teachers, I mean, what are the teachers saying about this? What's the voice of the teacher?
I mean, the teachers on the committee were, they were all in favor of it and had, I mean, there were, I can't think of all the reasons now, but I mean, they were supportive of this. There wasn't a teacher who said, I really wish it was Friday.
Because I almost feel, I kind of feel the same way you do. It's like, pick a day. Let's pick a day and do it. Like, I mean, not, not that we're gonna do it, but pick a day, commit to the day, consistency. It's a lot easier for parents and families to, to, to schedule. I think what you did, I'm gonna put words in your mouth. I think what you did is try to accommodate. And then that is generous, but I think to Elaine's point earlier, we should pick a day. So why don't we, unless somebody else has something burnt, what's that?
I didn't say that.
No, I did. Unless somebody else has something that they want to add, why don't we let it rest? Listen to what people have to say. We understand what the educators are saying, that they prefer, and then we'll put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
If I could, I think the only, one of the other factors that went into the splitting was that Raina will be doing this four times, and we didn't know if doing it seven times in the first year, you know, made much, but she, you know, she's, she's on her own. She can, she'll do whatever she wants.
And so, yeah, Susan, you wanna go ahead and then Elaine?
So that was my question. If you had to pick a day, it would be Wednesday. Is that...
I believe so.
Okay. I was just curious.
The question I was gonna ask is I see some changes to the K to eight conference schedule. No school November is, got moved. It looks like conferences are now in October, and in March, instead of that, it's like two half-days on a Wednesday, instead of, I think it was a Thursday and Friday before.
That's right, yeah.
Yeah, can you just explain, Mike, what we're into that?
Sure. The, the conferences, we did that because of the way the weeks fell for the October-November thing, for the, and for this, for the fall conferences. For the spring conferences, the Unit Eight contract says that, that the spring conferences have to be at least seven days apart. And that one is in the afternoon and one is in the afternoon and evening for the, so those, I think they're yellow. Yep, bright yellow, yep. And then the contract language says that the spring full-day professional development day has to be at least seven calendar days from any early-release day. So in the two years, two other years we've done this, we've received, got a waiver from the NREA, you know, to, to do that. But this time, you know, we said, well, you know, the contract language, if in doubt, follow the contract language, which is what we did. So that's why we have the two, let's see, was it 1625, is that what that says?
1825.
1825.
Yeah, okay.
And then the full-day professional development day is, we're looking at dark blue, right? There it is, the Friday, the sixth. Because that gives us a week between, and a week between each of the half-days.
Are we good? I'm sorry, John.
The October ones, too, we weren't looking, is, is, what I'm saying, is trying to maximize as many solid weeks or four-day weeks or whatever as possible.
Yeah, this year was a mess. And just one last thing. The, the enrichment for the kids that are not currently enrolled in it, how are you going to inform the parents that it's okay they're not already enrolled in it, and how are you gonna advertise that?
Well, I think that that can come after. I think first of all, I, we need to decide what the calendar is gonna be, and then I think we'll take those next steps and flesh out the details. I, I think that Raina's very in touch with the community. She's masterful at getting the word out. So, I mean, it's a real strength for her. So I'm not worried. That's a great point. It's not lost on us.
All right, can we move on? We'll put it on the agenda for next time. Thank you. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Appreciate all your work too. Human resources update, you can't leave.
It should be short though. Guide five. Let's see, US Human Resources Updates is essentially focusing on attrition for next year. So really that's retirement's resignation. I can tell you that it's early, no one yet has expressed an intention to resign, you know, at the end of the school year, so we have no resignations just yet. We do have eight people that are retiring. Five are retiring at the end of June, and two are gonna retire in September, probably when they, it's very early in September. So we've got eight retirements coming up this year. There could be more coming, but the ones, any ones that we receive now are likely people who aren't eligible for the retirement incentive because they would have need to have told us already, you know, in order to take part in the retirement incentive.
Okay.
They have 12 employees who are going to be making length changes. That's either going, basically, for most parties, when you retain 15 graduate credits, you go from the column that says bachelors to the column that says bachelors 15, bachelors 15, to masters or bachelors 30. Then you, or from 30 credits if you've got masters to masters 30. Anyway, we have 12 people that are gonna be making those length changes. Do you want to know how many are going from one to N, or not really? Do you want to know how many are going from one to N, or not really?
No, I don't think so.
No, but thank you for offering.
You're welcome.
And we're good? All right. Any questions for Anne Marie? Nope. Staff requests, FY twenty.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just update you, if that's okay.
That sounds good.
So, you've got a sheet, and actually Anne Marie helped to do this, so Anne Marie, feel free to stay up and we can just walk through, but I'll just kind of quickly go through it and then to let you know, I wouldn't say that this is in stone at this point in time, because I think that there's still some, still some reductions, if we will, I just want to say cut.
I know.
Reductions, if you will, on the ask. And I would also ask that we be cautious, because sometimes when we start to get into staff requests and there are changes that are made, sometimes we make changes because we can see that there are some other changes that are happening within a building, for example, the high school, where we can see some additional changes, and so we've been able to make modifications to the reductions because we can foresee some changes of staffing that we didn't see even two weeks ago. Because it's personnel, I'm not in a position to give specifics, so I would just put that out there on the table right now, so it's kind of like saying, if I, if you ask me a question, I say I can't answer, it doesn't mean that I don't want to, it just means that I'm not in a position to.
So, for instance, the Spanish teacher and the English teacher at the high school, I would want to see that restored, like, I wouldn't want to take away, and is that one of the ones you can't?
That is.
Okay, good, that makes me feel good.
Because those, and I'm going to speak on Paul's behalf, but in essence, because there are some other internal changes that have shifted, we've been able to meet those needs that two or three weeks ago, we didn't think that we could. If things had not, if we had not seen some changes, we would have probably kept those positions in there.
Okay.
So, I'm very comfortable with that, and I'm gonna tell you the ones I'm not comfortable with, but I'm very comfortable right now with the high school.
Tell us which ones you're comfortable with, because I'm a little bit questioning the dean of students, but...
That's okay. So, I left the dean of students in for this particular, this particular round, I don't know whether it will survive the last round, because we still have, now Pat may be able to help me out, but I want to say about six hundred thousand, we still have to cut between this committee and next committee meeting that we're looking for, so I don't know whether that position is going to survive or not. So, I just want to speak to that, though, one of the reasons it's still on here is because in my heart, I still feel that that's a need in that building. As outlined, outlined now, I know that Principal D. Domenico did a job description, he and Anne Marie Stricko worked together on that, we sent that out for you to take a look at. However, we've also seen some shifts that I'm not privy to talk about, that may lean us to removing that, but I'm just not quite there yet. So, it's still on there as of this moment, so, oh, thank you.
This was being added?
Yeah, no, no, this is just, this is the dean of student job description that he had created, so I thought it was supposed to be, but it's not. So, we'll just give that to you to take a look at, so you can see where his thinking was. The tech ed teacher at Center, Principal McCarron and I have had that discussion, and again, it was one of those, what is, two positions that are there, what are the positions that you've, what's the position you feel you really, really badly need, and he really feels strongly about, the innovation, intervention-based instructional assistant. So, we've kept that on there at this point in time, and we've removed the tech ed teacher. Hale, in speaking with Principal Brady, he feels strongly, seeing the need coming up from Center School to Hale next year, feels strongly that he really needs that literacy specialist. I would tell you, though, that in my heart, I'm not comfortable yet with the fact, even though we've cut that assistant principal position, I feel strongly that he really needs that, particularly in light of the evaluations that he needs to get done, it's just, it's just too big of a job for one person over there right now, and his building is going to be pretty much at max next year for the number of bodies that are in there. We've cut it at this moment in time, as we've been working with numbers, but I would tell you, that's one I'm not very comfortable in cutting. Rollinson, this is an interesting one, again, Principal Shane and I have been working on this, not prepared to go into details on this, but at this point in time, I think we have found a way to help support the position that he was in, so we both feel very comfortable with taking that position off right now.
Okay, are you sure? Because we don't want to add in the middle of the school year, like, we did both.
We've had that conversation as well.
You think you're gonna be okay?
We're good, we're fine right now with that, so we're, we're very comfortable. The two nurses, those are non-negotiables, really, because those are the ones that were grant, and we can't do those nurses, we're already, I feel that our nurses are already maxed, so those are going to stay on no matter what. The facilities piece, and again, Mr. Friesewich and I have had a conversation, I know how badly he feels he needs this position, we've removed it for now, but I've talked to him about perhaps next year, we can come back at it and look at it through a little bit of a different lens, but right now, as it's laid out, right here, right now, we've taken it off as it sits right now. And then those other positions remain, so, so you can see the differential there right now is at three twenty, six eighty-seven, so that's where it sits tonight, but you may still see some shifting between this meeting and the next school committee meeting.
So, if Anne Marie's got eight...
Retirements.
Retirements, I'm assuming there's some...
We've taken that into account.
Efficiencies?
You're gonna see that tonight when we put up the budget.
That would adjust these numbers?
No.
This is outside of that.
Yes.
Those have already been taken into account.
That's correct, you'll see that on our slide tonight.
So, I'm not gonna say anything more, folks, open up, yep.
So, some of the numbers that are in the salary column end with a fistful of zeros, and some of them end in a fistful of non-zeros, so does that mean that the zero numbers are estimates?
Yes, because you don't know when you're hiring exactly what you're hiring, right?
Okay.
So, that's why there are the zeros, that's kind of gives you that range to say that's probably about the ballpark that it's going to be in.
Okay.
Somebody could come in a little less, somebody might come in a little bit higher.
Okay.
As opposed to the others that we know, I mean, for example, the nurses, we know exactly what they're making.
Okay, so the follow-up question is, the five twenty-four compared to the three twenty, that's just a, the three twenty represents a smaller ask compared to the original?
That's absolutely right, yeah.
Just for the money.
Thank you for asking.
There's no reduction in staff?
Right.
Okay, who else? Susan, you got anything for us?
No.
Sure? How do you feel about, I'm not picking on you, Principal D. Domenico.
No.
Okay. And I also respect the fact that when you came to us at the workshop and I said, if you had to pick a dean of students or this, or the teachers, which would you pick, and you said, I really need the dean of students, but not to the detriment of the kids, so, like, everybody needs to know that you did that, but I'm struggling with additional admin, we've been adding admin and admin and admin, and I also do not live in that school, so I do not know, but I just put that out there. And we came along. Does anybody else want to? Steve, you got something? Your fingers up in the air?
Yeah, we had, we had a discussion on this in the budget and warrant committee meeting. Last year, we authorized a slot at the high school for a third assistant principal. By, by having some bodies change where they were, that position in reality was never filled.
Last year, this is part of your, you're right.
It was not filled last year. So, if you look at, let's say, from a point of view of a table organization, that position is still there. And I have talked to a couple of people in the process about taking the dean of students' position off and just filling the third assistant principal position.
Isn't that semantics?
Well, the question, what, it's not, it's not really semantics, because you've got a slot there that was never filled and money that was never spent, but it was authorized last year, and I'm concerned that, you know, once again, I'm concerned with the more administration, more administration position, but in reality, it's, it's my opinion anyway, that we don't need a dean of students, we just fill the position that exists. As I recall, the third assistant principal was primarily for discipline and evaluations.
That's what a dean of students does, though, right? Isn't that what a dean of students does?
Well, for discipline and aiding in the evaluation process.
That's the difference between the vice principal and the dean, is the vice principal could help with, what, my understanding was, the ad, sorry, Steve, the ad for the vice principal, a big part of that was to help with the overload of evaluations, so if that shift took place, there must be some kind of...
Well, that's the question, what is the need, right? So, if the need is evaluations...
I don't know, like, if...
Yeah, no, no, we haven't had a chance to look at it, but, but that, but that's the question, what's the, what's the need?
What I'm saying is, the position is already there. I, I think a position is already there, I think having it on this sheet as new staff is misleading.
But it's not filled, so there's no money there attributed to it.
But there was.
But there was.
There was.
Last year.
Last year.
So, the budget shouldn't go up for it.
So, the budget should go up?
Should not go up for it, because it's in the existing budget.
Well, and I also remember, I mean, you know, I don't want to get into splitting hairs, but I also remember us saying, we don't really need three principals at the, three assistants at the high school, we really need one over here, and so...
But we did have, we did, we did move one to make a stir.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it was never that we felt, no, I want to be really clear on that, too, so it was never felt, from my perspective, because you'll recall that I was really the one that came to champion the third assistant principal for that building, and I still feel that there's a need in there, although I say that, I'm not sure where this is gonna land, but we said, as part of our cost-saving measure last year, and we did the shift of all the, the assistant principals that we did, it was a cost-saving measure, and at that point in time, we said, let's do this year without one, and let's see what the real need is, and now we're coming forward and saying, okay, you know what, here is the real need. So, I don't think that we ever felt that we were dismissing that position, or that it was something that didn't work, or anything like that, so from our lens, we never took that position as such away, so to your thinking, that's how we saw it, but what we did do was cut that money away.
The money was cut away?
Yeah, at that, for last year, because, as we made the budget work, because we knew at that point in time, as we were getting closer to the end of the year, we still knew that we were looking at cutting the money away from, to make the budget work for our communities, so that's what we did, and we said, well, we'll just try this for a year and see how it works.
Is the, the ask for the, like, is it back in the budget for next year, that third?
No, the, it's, that's what I'm saying, that's why it's sitting right there as a dean of students.
So, it's a new ask, because it's not like there's, there's a fund that money should...
There's not a fund of ninety thousand that's sitting there, but I do agree with, I think Steve makes a valid point, because he, from my lens, I absolutely agree there, from right, from the philosophical perspective, you understood the need for a third position, or you wouldn't have approved it last time, and so I think that that need didn't go away, so that's why you see him coming back and say, okay, we did it last year, like, this current year with the two, and we know that that third position is still a needed position.
Can I just go back to the evaluation, so then, wouldn't it make sense to, to leave it more flexible, like, to have it as a vice principal rather than a dean of students, because then if there's a need one year for evaluation and there isn't, the following year can shift more to discipline?
I completely agree with you, to leave it, to leave it in some, some ways, the amount of flexibility that that administrative team needs, because, again, like, all leadership, you try to work with people with their strengths, whatever their strengths are, right? And so, to your point, you're right, like, I mean, somebody might be really good at curriculum instruction, somebody might be really good at connecting with kids, somebody might be really particularly good with dealing with high-risk, and that, so that flexibility that you're talking about is always something you look at if you're a good administrative team, so you're right, to leave that window of flexibility would be an important thing to consider.
Okay, so you're gonna go back at it, and when you come back to us?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, so moving on, December, January results, and thank you for preparing this, the way that that document is, it's so clear and easy for people to understand.
Anne Marie, yeah.
Thank you so much.
We all had our say in it, but Anne Marie did the final work on that.
I think sometimes people see numbers and they get nervous until they start to read what it is.
I think even, Mike's question, I thought was a really valuable question, because, I mean, to your point, I think sometimes, so many numbers are flying, and it's season, and you're gonna see a pile more numbers fly, and sometimes you just have to step back and say, wait, is this exactly what I think it is, because this is what I think it is, and so I appreciate those questions.
Hi, Pat, what do you got for us?
Results of operations for December and January. So, you can see that there has been some change in a couple of the lines, if anybody has any questions in particular on any particular line, or someone wants to, I can probably give you some answers.
I'm sorry, Elaine, go ahead.
That's okay. So, I'm still not comfortable by December and January with anything being zeroed out. How come every single line doesn't have a more accurate projected expenditures to get us to some number that's not zeroed out in there?
Well, in some cases, I mean, at this point in the year, they haven't, the schools have not spent on all of their supply and contract service.
Sure.
Money. So, what I do is, I usually assume that they're going to spend that till the end of the year. If you see changes, like, a negative amount, that usually is a result of salary changes, either we hired somebody that was less money, or that somebody was a little bit more than we had anticipated, because we have a flat amount that we budget for hiring, so this is basically, you know, an estimate of expenditures to the end of the year based on what their budget is.
Right, so anything that budget versus actual is zeroed out, means that what they have left to spend during the year is, I don't want to say surplus, but is sort of like, yeah, they'll spend it, but they're not gonna go over that number?
Well...
Unless something unusual happens.
No, at this point, we would assume that they would, because I, I watched that.
Okay.
You know, it's, it's, our process that we have in place through our accounting software flags it if it's over budget, and actually won't even let them enter anything into the system to be purchased if it's over budget.
Do you put a moratorium on spending at any point?
Yes, at some point in time, you will do that, we've done that for the last couple of years.
And it's worked very well for us, because then everything comes in, it's done in a timely fashion, she can do her year in an appropriate manner, so we would do, we'll do that again this year.
Okay. Any other questions on this? Mike?
Pat, the numbers that are represented parenthetically versus the numbers that are not, parenthetically, that's, that's negative.
Right.
So, the numbers, some of those numbers get really big, right, upwards of two hundred, so, you know, a good chunk of the, the budget year remaining, how do we cover, like, how do we cover that, then? So, I mean, the, the smaller numbers, I sort of understand, but some of these numbers seem to be really, really big, is it just, is it, is it just...
Well, the bigger numbers, in the case of, let's see, like, at Luther Burbank.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's a hundred and fifty thousand, that is because we brought the principal in, and we knew that we were going to have that deficit in that line, because we didn't fund the principal, the assistant principal at the high school.
So, there's a perfect example, Mike, of what we were talking before, so we knew right out of the gate. And, and Mike, just FYI to, you bring up such a great point, so thank you for doing this, you'll see that happen, because, you know, when we do our budget and your budget is approved come March fifteenth, I can tell you, a lot of things happen between March fifteenth and August twenty-eighth of the new year, I mean, that's a lot of months in there, so this is typical of what you're going to see in school districts, because there's so much ebb and flow that goes on, so, I mean, for us, because we do it every day, we, we knew that that, you know, a hundred-plus thousand was gonna be out of kilter there right out of, but we knew it was gonna be covered in another line, so that's why did you see the ebb and flow. What you really need to be looking at is your bottom line, bottom right-hand corner, that's the number to take a look at, right?
I refer back to Madam Chairman's remarks. I, I refer, I refer back to Madam Chairman's remarks at the beginning of the meeting when she said if you have a counting background, things are different.
Yeah, they really are.
It's taken me a year and a half to figure that out, where the differences actually are, but yeah.
It's a different universe here.
It's a different way of looking at the numbers, yeah.
Any other question? Elaine?
Question. Insurance and benefits is running a large surplus and I remember it ran a large surplus last year as well.
Right.
Are we over budgeting or is, is there something different happening between last year and this year? I mean, I'm hesitant to ever say what's.
I, I can tell you for the insurance, at the time that we budgeted, what we usually do is we reach out to our health insurance carrier and we ask them what the estimate is for the insurance going into the new year. So we estimated at seven percent. It came in at three point eight and, and along, along with the, the, part of the difference between the seven percent and the three point eight was because they made some plan changes. The insurance advisory committee met and we made some changes to co-pays and, in the plan. And we're currently working on doing that right now as well, so we hope to.
There are, there are a myriad of reasons why that line is what it is. You know, I mean, you have staff that comes in and out that changes. You have people that drop off plans, you have people, I mean, it's just an ebb and flow all the time. It, it isn't always like this. It happens to be like this this year, you know, but it's not always like this.
Right, and you'll probably see things start to stabilize more in the future.
So do you feel the need to budget for everyone who could jump on a plan?
We don't, now, Pat, correct me if I'm wrong, but we don't budget for every single person because we know that some people won't, right? But we have to have enough in the budget to make sure that anybody that's newly coming in can take advantage of it.
Or an existing employee could, right?
That's exactly right because that happens as well. So you're absolutely right, Susan.
And we look at trends, like when people jump onto our plan, there was a trend where people were jumping on. But now that seems to have leveled off. And we're staying at like a consistent level. So I budget for X amount of people to come in and jump on our plan. If they don't, then that's a little bit more of the surplus. And then there's some other things too in, in that line. It's not just insurance in that line. What we also have is our unemployment, our property casualty insurance is in that line. And so we've experienced some savings in that area.
Right, I mean, we do a lot of the PD that they, that they offer to us so that brings down our, our amount, like just little things like that. But I mean, we do quite a lot of that here. And those, that's part of the benefit that we're seeing.
Our workers' comp, our experience in our workers' comp has been good. And a lot of that is because we participate in some of the programs that my office is at. And they help to reduce injury.
Awesome. Are you good?
Thanks, Pat.
Thank you, thank you. I'm gonna move quick into the DECA donation, if it's okay with you, Pat. I'm gonna steal your thunder because I want to move this through. So we have a hundred and sixty-five kids who are doing DECA at the high school this year, which is an increase in the number of children that have done it in the past. Clinton Savings Bank has graciously offered to donate two thousand five hundred dollars to help defray the costs for transportation, et cetera, et cetera. The letter is in your pocket. So we need someone to move accepting the generous two hundred, twenty-five hundred dollar donation by Clinton Savings Bank to the show of DECA. Someone, thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
Questions, comments? At least seconded, all those in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Moving on. It's old business. Oh, here we go. FY twenty budget, yay!
Now, I'm not sure how quickly you want to push us through or if you want us to do snapshots or go into a lot of detail.
Let, let me know along the way.
I, I wrote down a bunch of questions, but now I can't remember what I did with the paper, so.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna start. I'll bring Pat up to the, the table though because I know that we're gonna be going through her presentation here quickly as well, just to kind of give you a flavor. But I'm gonna, I sent some, an email and I just want to go through some of the points that I mentioned in that email because I think it's important for our community to understand too. So I'm just gonna, just gonna go through some salient, salient points here. So tonight, we're going, we're going to have removed an additional one point one million and change. We continue to make reductions to facilities and technology as well as other staffing efficiencies, which you'll see up here, and some general instruction costs that we feel we can pick up in this current year that previously were slated for next year, but we think that we can pick that up. For example, some of the STEM scope, for example, we're gonna be able to pick that up in this year's budget. So the total reductions to the original budget rate now stand at two million and change. We've not designated any part of this year's budget for free full-day K, so I really want to put that out there. It's our hope that we identify and transfer some funds already identified as early education and revolving funds to put towards this process. But I really want to be clear, we're not doing anything with that until you make a decision on that because it would be foolish for us to start to plan if you all decide that this is not what you want to do. So that's one of the reasons why there's been nothing identified in the budget for free full-day K. The current budget rate now sits at approximately three point five eight percent as our total budget. And the following assessments as, as they stand tonight are in that ballpark. Bolton is still at five point nine nine, Lancaster's four point three nine, Stowe's point nine six. Last year, we struggled in our process to get to a place that would help support Lancaster's efforts. So you'll recall, this year, it's Bolton's turn. So we're, we're struggling to try to get down to a number that we feel and, and of course, the other, just the other communities will feel that as we try to work within where we see Bolton needs, we feel that it needs to be. But I, I really want to be clear that we don't budget based on our town's ability to pay. It's something we consider, but we always budget for what the students present and the classroom, what the needs are. So we're not driven by it, but it would be foolish for us if we didn't keep the two things in mind, our district and student needs and what we feel the towns can afford to pay. Otherwise, we would be taking budgets for our communities that will just fail and we'll be right back at the drawing board. So I, again, I feel very fortunate. I think we've got really strong relationships with our town administration. And so we've met, I've met separately several times with our town administrators and we've met collectively and again, just as early as a couple of days ago. So they know exactly where we're at. We're in constant communication with them. So I feel that we, we know where we need to get. Our ultimate goal is to arrive at approximately two point eight four percent. That's the ultimate goal. I think we can do this. We hope to be there by the February twenty-seventh meeting. In speaking with all of the three town administrators collectively, and I'd say unanimously, we all agree that the two, the two projects at the high school, the oil tank and the leach field should be outside of this budget for so many reasons. And so, you know, we'll speak to that a little bit more tonight. But the town administrators feel that they can, they can work with us and we can flush out the details. Pat's been on the phone talking with, you know, our advisors in this area to see what next steps are and we'll talk about that in a bit. The process that we took this year is basically the same process that we took for the last two years. And that really is based on the fact that the, the school committee at that time, when I first came in and said, don't just make all the cuts and present this to us. We want to see where the principals and/or our team leaders are. We want to see where they're going. Don't just bring the budget once it's all finalized. So we've deliberately not done that. We've done exactly what you asked us to do two years ago. So when they, when they team on that January twenty-six workshop date, it's our expectation that all of our administrators have a vision for their schools, for their units. And so what you've seen, I, I don't want to pick on Rob Freeswick's piece, but when I take a look at Rob Freeswick's, I know that he knows where he can see his unit going and he can see that he'd really like to have this person. And with that person came a bunch of other asks inside of that. So when that, when we cut that position or reduced it, then we reduced several other categories. But this doesn't mean that he doesn't need that position or that his vision is not a strong vision. It's some, something I want to get to. It's just that this is probably not going to be the year for it. So when they come with their visions of where they're wanting to take their buildings or their units, that's purposeful, that's strategic. So we are not reducing fluff. We're not, we're going back and being strategic. We have a lot of communication with our folks when we get to the point that we, we're going to get to tonight. So please don't let anyone think that this is fact that we're cutting. It's not. It's, we're cutting away at the visions that these people have brought forward to us. So with that, Pat, I want you to just talk through your presentation here quickly and then if you can, let us just kind of go through it all and then bring it all back, okay?
Okay, we'll wait.
So, Pat, let's, let's talk about our new numbers here, please.
So the first slide is what was presented on one twenty-six at the budget workshop. And these are the changes. The second slide represents the changes that we've made since.
So if you can move to the next slide? Thanks, right there.
The changes that we've made since then.
I, can I just say something too? I, I still feel that our facilities cuts are a little too slim and I know that we've had some discussion on that. We may have to go back and tweak that a little bit, that facilities line. But right now, this is where it's sitting tonight, but we may go back and have to make some, some minor changes to that before the twenty-seventh meeting.
And we have listed there our staffing requests that we cut as, as on the other document. And there are other staff efficiencies, the total bracketing eighty-five thousand and included in that is the efficiency from retirement.
It's not the only efficiency, but that's one of them. That's a, that's a huge bulk of it, yeah.
And technology, she, so she was kind enough to give us multiple scenarios and we're pretty much near the bottom now. And beyond that, I, I don't think that we could continue with our vision. So this is about as low as we can go with technology. General instruction cuts, they're small amounts across all the schools. And we're, you know, again, to go through all of the detail, it wouldn't, it wouldn't make much difference. Insurance, these are some efficiencies that we're looking at right now. We still have the insurance advisory committee with us. We went out to bid, as I've mentioned before, our health insurance and got some very competitive bids and it's looking good for us.
So we're comfortable in adding that back in?
Yes, we're comfortable with adding that back in. And athletics, there were some, some efficiencies there that we looked at and removed from.
What is that? I wondered what that was.
Washing machine.
No.
The dryer.
I think I owe Laura a piano too, but go ahead.
That, that's the washing machine.
I think there were, there were a number of things in there. And again, that's one too that I said to Pat, we had talked about it the other day and I said, you know, we may end up going back and adding just a little bit there because she cut some things there that I'm not so sure that I would have cut. And I also want to say too that, you know, in all fairness to our folks, like we can, we can go through and say what we think, what Pat and I think they might want to consider for reducing as such as opposed to cuts, but reducing their ask, ask. However, at the end of the day, what we, what we do tend to do is say, we would make these suggestions, but here's the total amount that we're looking for you to reduce your number by because we know that they know where their priorities are, what has to be done. And, you know, nobody knows the buildings better than Rob does. So for me to come and say, hey, don't, don't you think that we can put this up? He'll say, no, you can't. And, you know, so, so we look to them because they're really the ones that are most in tune with their units or their buildings.
And we stay mindful of that, even in the, in the schools, in the general instruction cuts. We are very respectful of what they think they need for the buildings.
And we've tried really hard not to cut our schools. Right now, we haven't really touched the schools and the, the asks of the schools. Those we've, we've tried very, very hard to keep them as much as pristine as we possibly can for the ask that they have because they don't ask for too much. Is there another slide there? Thank you.
Thank you. So this is where we've landed right now with those cuts. On Bolton with a five point nine nine percent increase in their assessment from last year. Lancaster, four point three nine percent and Stowe at point nine six percent increase in their assessment from last year.
If I can just make a comment on that too. For us to move to where we think we can live with Bolton's number with what they, what we feel that they need, we're trying to get that number under, just under five percent. So that means basically a whole percent is what we're trying to, to lean between this budget meeting, or this school committee meeting and the next one. And I will tell you right now that Stowe will probably be looking at a negative number. So that's just, it's just based on the assessment numbers. And, and again, I want to also mention that too. It's not like we create those assessment numbers. We don't. They're the numbers that come into us from the government. It's not formulated. It's nothing that we do here. It's based on that. Pardon?
We usually, we're Bolton is, we're usually the highest number.
No, but you weren't, yeah, but you weren't last year. No. So, no, like I say, now it might be your turn next year because Lancaster and Bolton. So Stowe, but, but we've known all the way along for the last several months that Stowe was going to be in this position. And we knew that. We, we also knew for the last couple of months that, that Bolton would be sitting where it is. Lancaster's the one that's kind of in the middle that right now this year and it's, and I think that they're fine. I mean, we've had lots, again, we've had lots of discussion with our administrators through all of this.
I just had a question because you mentioned, but you're trying to get Bolton under five and that still might be negative. But do you have a sense if you get down to the two eight four, will Lancaster would be?
Um.
What that number is?
I want to say three point something, but I, don't hold me to that. I think if my memory serves me right, it's in the three point.
So less than four.
I think it's less than four. Don't hold me to that, but I think that that's the number that. So I think, and that's the last slide, right? I just want to make sure. One of the things that we do want to kind of set up though tonight is, is for us a key thing because we've got a timing piece that's at play here for the two high school projects. And we have a six, sixty-day window. Now, Dawn, correct me if I'm wrong on this, but we've got basically a sixty-day window here that we've got to work with it. And so I'm really looking for some guidance from, from you in this, this way. If you agree that we should move ahead and borrow the money that's necessary for the leaching field and the, the oil tank, the oil tank, then we need to come back to you next school committee meeting with very specific, very appropriate language that we're going to have to have our lawyers craft. So that, and that that will go forward and we'll, in a letter to the towns to let them know that this is what we're doing. But the towns all know that this is what we're looking at, so. And I want to thank our towns too.
Just bear in mind that you don't want to have the committee vote until we're within the sixty-day window.
Right. But they, they need to give me direction though.
No, no.
Right, are you guys good with that, pulling that expense out of the budget to borrow? It spreads it out over more years and it relieves.
More of the time.
More evenly, right? I mean, so, so one town doesn't take a bigger hit in the assessed increase, right?
Well, and we, you know, we said that we can work that out. It, that's a, that's a great point. I think the bigger point for us, now again, I want to make sure I get this right, is that this will give us a little bit more of a reprieve in this particular budget year. And so that's, that's another reason why this is, that's a small minutia piece of this. But nonetheless, an important piece of, because we won't start real, like, we won't have to borrow this until after July first, which basically puts us into another calendar year. So that's going to be very helpful for all of our communities. I hope I explained that right.
Well, pretty much. I mean, if we have to ban for it, there'll be some expense. It could be interest only, but we may have to pay something. I'm not sure that it's zero. And also, as we discussed Monday, the sixty days is what our recollection is. It's prescriptive. It's by chapter seventy-one, section sixteen D, which I'm pretty sure is sixty days, but I haven't looked it up since.
It is sixty days.
We looked it up.
Elaine, you know, do you want to?
Yeah, I'm just a little concerned about the SOI because these are two issues at the high school that need to be replaced and we're taking care of them. So it's not.
We don't have a choice though, right?
No, I, I.
I know, and I hear what you're saying. It's like, are we wasting that money? But no, but there's no guarantee we're getting it. And if we did, I mean, we still have to have kids in that school for a number of years.
Before you would break that.
Right?
So is there a way to do this so that we're? So is there a way to do this so that we're not cutting anything during the year, George?
So just, I'm not sure that this is where you're going, but if I could just spring from your question. I did have a very good conversation with MSBA on this. So we played telephone type for a bit and then we connected and had really good conversation. And at the end of all of it, it basically came back to exactly where we're sitting tonight. That's what the recommendation from them is for us of what we should be doing with this.
Bless you.
There, in fact, a comment was made that if we, if we, well, first of all, if we don't do something with it, then it looks like we're being neglectful. So we don't want to do that. But the second thing is if we were to try to put in for some funds from MSBA on this, we would, I quote, be competing against ourselves. I have no interest in doing that.
That's for sure. All right. So is everybody comfortable with Superintendent Clenching bringing forward that language to move ahead with borrowing?
I see lots of heads shaking. Yes.
You good? Do we have any issue? No, we don't want to vote on it right now.
I'm good. I just need direction from you. That's all. So we'll go ahead and then Pat and I will look into this further.
All right. Are we good? Are you set? And so let's jump quickly into technology budget.
He's basically just going to come and tell you how much money he's had to reduce and I think Rob's probably going to do the same. So I think. Should we turn this over? I'm not sure, Todd, whether you or she is just going to pick this up. Do you have a slide as well?
No.
No, okay. We're just going to talk this through, right?
Yeah, we're just, just in terms of next year. Yeah. So Chi was really good in terms of presenting us a number of options in terms of technology. In terms of the budget that we put out there on the Saturday meeting. What we put forward to you earlier in the presentation really, and what Pat mentioned was that we're really at the point now where we're at the minimum. In terms of minimum capacity for next year, in terms of the amount that we have cut thus far. And maybe Chi can talk specifically about what those elements that we have kind of taken away to get to the point where we're at now, what we're able to do to get to the number that we're at now. But Pat mentioning that we really are at that kind of bottom in terms of what we do need to support our digital and our technological initiatives in the district.
Okay, so basically, just kind of a quick overview of how we do the tight budget. For hardware, software, services we need. When we plan this, there's a three categories while looking at this. First one is the items that we must have. Second is the items we should have. And the third one is items, you know, would be nice to have. So the one we present to you guys on the, during the workshop twenty-six, that is what has everything. So the one we present to you guys now, you know, is what we must have. So what we're cutting is two big pieces. So first one is the E rate. So the one we presented in the workshop, we didn't take away the E rate refund. So in this round, we take that money away. So that, you know, that's why you see a lot of cut from there. So the second part is, you know, the general cut from the software, hardware and services. So those are the two big areas we cut.
So where did you fall, where did the technology spend fall?
Well, you could take a look. We showed it earlier with that one slide and you could see how much was cut from technology in those two slides actually from the first meeting and the second meeting.
It was a hundred and forty-eight.
What's the ask though, right now? Where does the ask sit right now?
That's what would be his total less the, less the cuts. So do we know what that is?
Actually, there is another way to look at this, probably easier for folks to understand. The tight budget, so the non-salary budget, in the past two years, we have been reduced budget like by sixty percent each year in the past two years. The budget we present now, that's another nine percent decrease. So in three years, we have been decreasing quite a bit.
So, and kudos to you for that, but I still want to know what's the ask for technology now? And if you can't, you can, I mean, we can go on and when you find it, just interrupt. No big deal. Does anybody have any questions for Chi?
Well, I mean, once we have that other number, because there's in the packet, there's also like the thing that we asked for, which was like the, how much are you actually?
That's where he's at right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, the actuals.
Because I know one of the big questions we had and then I think was the huge range when you were talking about the like internet. And that you had actually been able to get a reduction through Comcast or something, or they giving.
It was a lot cheaper.
Yeah. So that was, was part of it, I think. What we wanted to, once Pat has that number, just sort of comparing because I think that was one of the, when we looked at it the first time, it was so massive. We're like, oh my goodness, is it, you know, why is it so different? But it sounds like between E rate and Comcast kind of cutting us a deal.
Right. Not only that, for the service, like technology, you know, if you look at the trend, if you use the same technology over the time, the price actually going down. Like for example, Comcast, we use the same speed for the past couple of years. You know, right now, like the speed compared to couple of years ago, like we save almost couple of thousand per max. That's the price difference. And also I think going forward, with the technology keep like improving, I think, you know, this is like further decrease, you know, if anything changes. And also same as the device we use, right now, like a lot of change, I know there's folks concerned about like we do the one-on-one, you know, we're seeing like how can we sustain that? The thing is like, by doing that, we're actually coming back on a lot of other stuff. Like in the past couple of years, we have been reducing lab, lab machines in all the elementary school and also now elementary, middle schools. We're reducing the library machine, the lab setup in the libraries. And also like we're also starting like replacing some of the more expensive stuff with a cheaper solution. Another thing we're actually looking, we talked about, what start looking at the solutions for like teachers laptop. Right now, the teachers, all teacher has a Windows laptop. That is kind of expensive. The reason we have to give the Windows-based machine is there are certain applications only use on Windows. But if like, you know, when technology moves, like improves, if those applications have web-based or Chromebook, then we can give teachers Chromebook instead. That also further, you know, reduce the cost. So things like that, you know, actually, you know, we actually can reduce the cost year after year. But I wouldn't say like we're going to have this kind of like a ten percent or ten plus percent of decrease every year. You know, I would say like, we have like ten year plan. If you look at that, you know, couple of years down the road, you probably say one year there's a bug. Because the one, the things we are doing now is we reduce all the way to the must-have items, but for those like should-have items. At some point, those should-have items.
Become must-haves. Right.
For those time, you will see a jump.
So I would say like, I mean, your area, obviously, technology, I mean, that's like heating oil to me, but that's my opinion. But we need, I think because of this year, I mean, last year we were pretty, we were pretty good. We funded some things that I was kind of proud of us for. But I think this year we have to look at essentials, right? Like really essentials. So that doesn't mean that it won't happen next year or the year after that. It's just, and it's not because I live in Bolton. Because, no, it's not, because a couple of years ago, I fought for Lancaster and I lived in Bolton. But it's because we need to look at essentials. I mean, we're, this is not pretty. So don't feel like if you're cutting back this year and you feel like you've been cutting back. If you get to a point where you're missing essentials, that's when we need to know.
Yeah.
But if you're not there, we can't be there this year. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I understand. And also like, you know, there are always a ways we make this work, you know, technology-wise.
Well, that's why we love you. Thank you for saying that.
Thank you, Chi. We appreciate everything you did.
Chi, thanks for coming.
Numbers for you.
Oh, perfect.
So at the 126 nineteen workshop, we're at a million seventy-six, two thirty-three. This is for non-salary. And we're now at seven hundred and seventy-six thousand of eleven.
So that's.
Year-to-date. Wait, 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 wait.
No, this is. This is what's in the budget.
It's next year.
So basically, this is how much, how much has been cut.
Okay.
So that's near, almost a hundred thousand less than last year.
Less than that percent.
That's exactly what you said earlier. Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Chi.
Thanks, Chi. Facilities.
Mr. Freeswick. My snow buddy at four o'clock this morning.
Yeah.
Today's going to be a long day for us.
Knock on wood with the snow, right? Snow removal, but I would like to hear about your electricity problem, but you can go ahead and do your thing and then I'll ask. Yeah, I look at that line and it makes me nervous. Only got seventy-one thousand dollars for the rest of the year.
Oh, just, she's looking at the actuals is what she saw.
Oh, okay, okay.
I won't jump ahead, but just know it's coming. So go ahead.
So we've, you know, taken from our January twenty-sixth workshop in our scheduled maintenance and, you know, made the necessary reductions. We've hoped made the necessary reductions focusing on the mechanicals and security updates that we need to do. I think we're in a pretty good place right now with those numbers to be where we need to be. To help aid in getting those numbers down for the assessments for the towns. You know, there's nothing in here I think that's not necessary. Like I said, it's all, it's all mechanical. It's all things that we need to do, things that I think have been deferred over the past quite a few years. And if we don't start doing, we're going to have major failures of some of this equipment. Some of the compressors in some of the units that are running series. So right now, we've had failures with, you know, one or two of the compressors, which is putting more string on, you know, compressor three and four within that unit. So if we don't get those replaced, we could lose that whole unit and the next thing you know, it's costing us sixty or seventy thousand dollars as opposed to twenty thousand dollars to make the repair. Some of the other things, you know, I think it's a hot topic with this group is vehicles. And, you know, we, as we sit right now to try to get to the numbers that we need to get to, you know, we took that vehicle out. But I do feel that, you know, we need to be proactive and start replacing some of these transition vehicles, you know, in a timely manner. So we don't, you know, run into a situation where it's broken down and we have.
Or somebody has to run to Boston because our vehicle is broken down and, you know, and that was Rob the other day. And, you know, our, a vehicle that we took into Boston failed in Boston and was sitting there and I'd like to point out, was put on Twitter. I don't know if you had, if you saw that, but it was put on Twitter.
Big social media stuff.
And it said to the A D, I hope your players play, perform better than your vehicle does, you know? The bottom line is like, we need to, like, we've pulled it out, but we're not comfortable with it, pulling it out because it's something we need. Like we, we transport kids, we transport staff. So that's why I said, there's a couple of things there that probably you might see us go back after that, that facilities line a little differently between now and next meeting. Because I'm too worried about some of these things that we can only cut so far, so.
But what happened to the thought of looking at excess at the end of the year?
That's the way we've been doing it. That's the way we did it last year.
But that's not, but by saying, but.
I know what you're saying. Yeah. Thought crossed my mind too.
So what, where are we at with that thought? Because I know you don't want to pull it out, but then it was like, well, what we're going to look at, you know, at the end of the year, if we have excess, then we're going to use that to buy a vehicle. So I'm not sure where the issue is. I mean, the concern could be that we don't know if there's going to be forty thousand dollars at the end of the year.
I think that if you recall, like, I mean, it was Mark Jones and Neil Darcy who were on the school committee at that point in time that brought that notion forward. But then, then when we did do it this year, then it was, it was not viewed necessarily favorably and it was like, make sure you put it in the budget year, remember? That's what you asked us to do. So that's what we did. You know, it's totally up to.
So, but you know what? I'm going to play devil's advocate. I mean, legit, legit play devil's advocate. So, but philosophically, we've just earmarked it in a different place. We could philosophically, we could take that line item out and then see at the end of the year what we do have in excess.
And I'm very comfortable, I'm very comfortable in doing that.
It would have to come to the school committee for you guys. It would have to come to the school committee for a vote because it wouldn't be part of the budget. But at least that way you would know what you were purchasing and when you were purchasing it.
Well, it would be buying it out of this fiscal year.
Right.
And with the leftover, yeah.
Right. I'm very comfortable in taking that approach.
You, you what?
I have no problem.
Yeah, I don't either. But I just think it's the transparency of what are we doing and when? And actually, if we do it this way and it has to come forward for a vote, I think that feels better. So you may not have it in your budget for next year. You may actually get it sooner.
True.
Awesome. I'm very happy with that. Any questions for Rob right now? No, well.
Yep, go ahead.
Sally.
Is that okay?
Sally.
I mean, I appreciate how much effort you've put into whittling.
Reducing.
Reducing, no cutting. But one of the, and this is maybe sort of a question for you and also sort of a question for Superintendent Clenching, is that one of the things that I've noticed is how nice all the buildings look. And the grounds and all the work that's been done. And I think you've really done an excellent job with that. And given that as a district, we talk a lot about social and emotional learning. We talk a lot about school climate and kids feeling like school is a place that they want to be. I hate, I don't want to see that go away. I don't want to see that stop. And I understand that, you know, budgets are what they are. And there are lots of things that are like, this is a dire safety thing, you know, we have to fix this boiler or we have to fix whatever. But I, I think that's something that has, I've seen just in the short time my kids have been in the district, I've seen that getting better and better. And how important it is to us meeting our mission as a district, that making kids feel like they're in a good place to learn. So I just want to make sure that we keep that balance.
To piggyback off of Chi, you know, we can get very creative, you know, in what we do to make sure that we maintain that.
Because I was pulling weeds this summer around this building and I'm not doing it.
Last summer. You felt very.
No, me neither. I was pulling weeds. I'm not pulling weeds again. Actually, I'll have so much time, maybe I will. I think, I think the school committee should have a field trip to pull weeds.
Do you have to fill out a form?
No, you don't. You just have to pull the dang weeds. Okay.
Elise, I really respect you for saying that. Thank you. Because I think that that is something that we quietly work at. Like it even, this is not a school, but for example, if you walk, let me just talk about creativity. As you're walking out this door tonight, out the staff entrance, you'll notice that the wall is painted. We asked two years ago if we could paint that wall and we painted it. And it was Manny that painted it, basically because we had an early release, a late start. And he, so he had a little extra time, so it's all painted. You will find a beautiful tapestry, because we don't know what else to call it, that Alita found in her desk ten years, eleven years ago when she first came and it was all bundled up. And we think that perhaps some little rodent friends created a home in there. However, she took it, we've got it all cleaned up and you'll see that it's now hung beautifully on your way out tonight. You will see it and it looks lovely. So when you talk about the creativity, that's, that's at a play. It's one small thing, but boy, it makes a difference when you walk up that door now.
It's also high into from the whole facilities team. You know, they see things moving forward in support from the school committee and the superintendent. You know, they feed off of that and they feel a sense of pride in the buildings, which I think makes a huge difference. It generates a lot more camaraderie, you know, within the team, which definitely helps out the guys that go in above and beyond, helping each other out to make sure that, you know, we're meeting the goals of the school district, you know, day in and day out.
We can, yes, you can go ahead and ask your question.
I have a question on.
This is probably more Pat's question than Rob's, but.
Sorry, Rob. Pat, on the year-to-date for facilities, the non-salary items. The electricity line item, we have a balance of only seventy-one thousand out of a budget of four hundred and seventeen. And we have a lot of months to get through. We have like March, April, May, June.
That's because.
Do you pay it in advance? No?
No, it's, there are expenditures that are being charged to some of the revolving accounts and they haven't been.
They haven't been transferred yet.
Okay, 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 okay.
So you'll see that happen at the end.
I was like, we're going to be way over that line item.
At some point in the year, I start to charge them till they.
I got it, got it, got it, got it, yeah.
Based on what was budgeted.
Thank you.
So those revolving accounts. So those revolving accounts, you're on top of that? That they're using to pay the electric bill?
No, we haven't been apprised of that information.
Would you listen?
Well, because what I'm worried about is, I mean, I don't know if those are debunked accounts? And then this is gonna be very, very different next year?
There are no debunked accounts. Well, I'm just, I mean, I'm not sure what's paying the electric bill, what revolving account is paying the electric bill. So, for example, like rentals.
Extended day?
So it's... Yeah, for rentals, there's a series of different things that, that would ultimately feed into this, that she'll transfer in as we get closer towards the end of the year. But we're not right now.
Okay.
And she, you'll see her, remember at the end of the year, she comes through with a whole slate of transference? That's what she'll do. And that's where it comes from. So it's not something that you monitor on a month-to-month thing, it's something that she'll bring at the tail end of the year.
Any other questions for Rob? Thank you.
Thank you, Rob.
Thank you.
All right. I would like to know if the school committee would consider taking a five-minute recess before we dive into the next topic.
Please.
Thank you. So please come back at, how about eight fifteen? It's eight eleven right now. We're gonna resume our meeting. Full-day kindergarten! So I had a chance to watch last week's component of that, but I'm gonna turn this over to Superintendent because you're gonna make a recommendation and then we're gonna discuss.
Right. And so I've asked Principal Shea and Principal Mulcaren to join me this evening. Just gonna quickly review what I went over last, last time and then, you know, we can have some discussion. And you can tell me what you, what moves to make or not make, or if you feel that you need to come back and have further discussion, and I'm certainly respectful of that. You would ask me to come forward with a recommendation. So I just want to review this super quickly if we can, thanks. We showed the numbers and we showed you the fact that we have certainly this year in Center and then next year in Center and Florence Sawyer, very small half-day numbers. The students are attending more to watch this for full day. M R E, we questioned that number and we say, you know, when, when some of those students go full day, if it was a free full day? And we're, we're kind of hedging on the side that probably they would. Just go to the next, I'm gonna go through this quickly, Alita, thanks. And then we took a look at the breakdown, because what we were really trying to do here was taking a look at the numbers between when the students were in kindergarten and grade one. So when you look at this particular sheet, you need to really look this way. Was there a substantial increase in the grade one numbers? Because that's one of the concerns I had, is if we open this up to free full day K, will we have just a flood of students come in? And our data shows us that probably not. Like, when you take a look at Center School, you're looking at, you know, this kind of, these kind of numbers. You're always gonna have those years where they're, it's kind of like, like, what happened that year that all of a sudden we have all these babies? You know, that's always gonna happen, where you're gonna have groups of sixteen or nineteen or fourteen just kind of come along. And that's just, that happens all the time in our business. But what we learned from looking at the years of data is that it wasn't enough that it put us off and said, oh my gosh, we can't handle free full day K, or that there's gonna be this enormous infusion of students that comes into the building. So we were comfortable once we took a look at that. Take a look at the next one, Alita, thanks. This is what we know right now in terms of our salary cost. This is the ballpark that we're playing in. I'll go, how to go to the next slide? Right now, if we did the scenarios, we took a look at a couple of different scenarios, but we really focused on if this was happening in this current year, what would it look like? And what we know right now is that the revolving fund, which is really the tuition money that comes in for this year, is going to be four hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars. Go to the next slide. If we were already on the free full day K program with the D E S E, the D E S reimbursement for us this year would be five hundred and twelve thousand. So in essence, if we were already into the program, we would be receiving more money this year from the D E S E than we are from tuition. So that, that's a key thing to note. And we also had them, as soon as the cherry sheets came out this year, we asked them to take a look at running the numbers for twenty, and this number actually goes up to five hundred and sixty-nine. One of the concerns that we have always had about this number here is the tuition in general, is that we've just never charged enough money in tuition to cover the, the costs of the program. So every year you're losing, either you look at it and say, we're losing money, or you look at it and say, well, through regular appropriation, we're paying for it anyway. So, I mean, it's really six and one and a half dozen, it's just the lens that you're looking at it from. Can you go to the next one, please? So what we know is that the gap here, there is a gap here that, that we know that we would have to come up with between five and six hundred thousand. Might be a little bit more than that, but it's going to vary in this neighborhood. It's gonna be dependent on the number of kids that we've got in the program. It's gonna be dependent on a couple of things, but that first year, you are not getting tuition money and you are not getting any money from the D E S E. Because the D E S E always pays behind based on your October first count. So that you're always gonna be out of sync a year at Infineon. So it's not like you ever get it caught up completely, because you're always gonna be out of sync by one year. But that's already what's happening with us in life anyway.
Can we level set one thing, though? This is in addition to what we would be paying anyway.
Right, that's right.
So I, I think it's really important for anybody who's listening to know that that's not the cost.
No, that's...
It's what we pay now and that.
That's right.
Okay.
That's exactly right, yeah. So the question is, of course, how, how do we get to this number? Because we, and I think it's just so important, I know that we said this last week as well, but I want to say it again. I think that folks out there think that we can do this on a dime, that just like, if the school committee, for example, was to decide, to decide tonight, yes, we want to start free full day K next year, that I could do it. And the bottom line is, there isn't the money there. Until you have the seed money that you need to run that first year, I have no six hundred thousand dollars that's sitting out there right now that I can tap into. It's just not there. You've gotta have the seed money in order to, to start the program. And so we looked at, and I think we thoughtfully planned, we looked at all kinds of different ways to try to get to that number. It's just, it's not something, clearly it's not something that can just fall out of the sky and you automatically have it. Now, different communities have done different things. So for example, in communities where their costs weren't as high as our costs, for example, our salaries, we have, most of our teachers, if not all of them, are at the top end of the scale. That makes a difference. So let's say another district was trying to do this, and I don't know, pick a, pick a number, let's say, let's pick Littleton. I happen to know that district. But this isn't the case at all, I'm just using it for, but I mean, maybe Littleton doesn't have all of their teachers at that end of the scale, so it's not as expensive a program. So maybe what they're charging works for their tuition, but it just doesn't for us, which is why we're always paying, we're always in the hole in that program. So it's kind of, when do you decide that you're going to make that movement to do this shift? And I think that that's really the question here. What I'm suggesting, I don't, it doesn't matter to me whether you take a look at starting it now or in two years' time, it doesn't matter. At some point in time, when you take a look at it, you're going to have to come up with that money. I do know other communities, and I've been very clear, I'm not asking this of our communities at all, but there are some communities where their municipal offices, for example, have said, you know, we got a little bit of extra money for this, or a little bit of extra money here. We know that, that free full day K is your priority. I know of communities where that's happened, but that's not our position. That's, we're not in that position. We're a very different position. So no matter how we, or when we look at doing this, we have to be planful. We have to be strategic. We have to get the seed money, because there's no other way of getting it unless we plan for it. Now, of the six hundred thousand, sorry, of the six hundred thousand, we, we have identified that we have some money that's out there right now that we feel that's, we can kind of pick and pull from in our revolving accounts, and I've mentioned that to you before. You know, I think that we've identified that we could have about three hundred thousand, but that still leaves you a gap of three hundred thousand. Even if you agreed to that, you're still gonna have a gap of three hundred thousand. Now, I'm just gonna play this out, and I'm not suggesting that this is what we do at all, but what you could do is say, well, and again, remember, I have no money budgeted right now, so whenever you make this decision, know right now that there's zero dollars in the budget sitting right now. So if you tell me to do that, whatever number, let's say you say, can you put fifty thousand in? Then that's the number that I'll go back tomorrow and plug in. Or whenever you decide to do it, it doesn't have to be tomorrow or even tonight. But at some point in time, you have to start to say, how are we gonna get this money and accumulate this money to get where we want to go? There has to be a plan in place. So if it's not this year, then decide when do you want to do it or not? It doesn't matter to us. I mean, other than the fact that this is our recommendation, we feel very comfortable in moving it forward right now. Again, I want to say that this is not to start for the nineteen-twenty, so like, not the next school year, or the twenty-twenty-one, but the twenty-one-twenty-two. And so it's a case of what do you do in those two to three years to get you where you need to be in order to pay, and to say, well, we could take three hundred thousand, that just put three hundred thousand in the budget? That's not, I don't think that that's being fiscally responsible either. So I think we need to be planful in how we approach this. So that's kind of a quick summary of what we talked about, or what we presented last time. So just for the sake of review and to make sure that you're...
That's really helpful. Yep.
So that's where we sit.
Okay.
And both Principal Mulcaren and Principal Shea are here, if you want to ask any additional questions of them.
All right, so your recommendation is how much and when? If you wouldn't mind?
I'm, I'm suggesting that you let us go back to the revolving accounts to identify three hundred thousand that comes from revolving. That leaves you a balance of about three hundred thousand that we have to figure out in some other way. I'm comfortable with the notion of, for example, again, not saying that we do this, that we block a hundred thousand for the next budget year, a hundred thousand for the year after, and the actual year that we implement, a hundred thousand. If, if that's what you want, and/or whatever that amount has to be, because it's going to change depending on the numbers of students that you have enrolled in your program. If that's the route that you want to take.
Three hundred thousand dollars is a huge amount of money in a budget year when we've been talking about essential needs, in a budget year when we're looking at financing the Leach Field and the, what's it called? The oil tank outside of the budget. So I think it's great that we can find three hundred thousand dollars, but what I, and I don't think... So let me step back for a second, I'm too deep in the weeds on this right now. How do people feel about free day, full, universe, let's just call it universal K? Because it gets confusing, because I heard statistics come, come out of this meeting, and it was reported in one of the papers last week that, that ninety-six percent of the state has full day K. Well, we're one of them. We actually charge a fee, but we're one of the ninety-six percent. There's also forty-five school districts that charge some type of fee, and we're one of those. So we're in good company. So like, I want to make sure that there's not this false narrative out there that the Neshoba Regional School District is only one of four percent in the state that don't have full day K. We do. Okay, so let's leave it there. But I think we're at a point, and I have to thank you and your team for the work that you did on this, because we have been talking about universal K back and forth. And I know the noise outside, and I get that, but it was like, we didn't have the data in order to make a, a healthy decision. This is so helpful. And I think that unless, you know, I didn't hear, and maybe there's more than, that I don't know, that this is not something we eventually want to do. And I think this is the time for people to talk about that if they do not want to do it. So I'm gonna ask every one of you, how do you feel about universal K? And then we're gonna talk about the money. How do you feel about universal K?
I'm completely in support of it.
And you are?
Completely in support.
Steve?
I am in support of it.
No.
Nope.
I'm in support of it.
Yep.
One hundred percent.
Okay. So now we talk about funding this. We have a liability that we are, we, I haven't heard anybody talking about, and I am really disappointed. O P E V is, what's our outstanding liability right now that we know?
Forty-three million.
Forty-three million dollars. That's not money that we might have to pay, that's money that we're likely gonna have to pay. With a forty-three million dollar chunk of money sitting out there, if we found three hundred thousand dollars, and I'm not being trite about that, I'm not trying to be flippant. At a minimum, we should be funding more of the O P E V. So I would say, if you really, if we want to do this, and we're finally here talking about this in a meaningful way, let's do it. But I think a two-year timeframe is accelerated. I think ignoring the massive liability that we know we have to pay. And so we can say that at some point the state may, may make universal K mandatory, and they may, they very well may, right? We've talked about this. But we already know, we owe forty million dollars. And we already know that bill's coming, and we know every year that we're paying as we go. And so as people start to age out of the system, and as people are starting to live longer, have you any idea what's gonna happen to that line item in the budget? It's going to explode. So all I'm suggesting is, I can get behind this, I'm okay with this. This is good for me. Take a longer view. Be, we need to, we need to understand that one of the most important roles of this function is fiduciary responsibility. Yes, we want these programs, absolutely, we know that the community wants it. But take a longer view of it, and, and I, and I, and I'm waiting, because I know we're gonna have this conversation. Well, we don't have to pay the O P E V now, we don't have to pay retiree health now. Well, we kind of are, and we will have to, we owe it. It's our liability. So that's where I stand. Wasn't here last time, have to put it out there. But I cannot get behind taking three hundred thousand dollars of found money. And I respect what you've done, it's not criticism of you. And putting all of that to a brand-new program with a massive outstanding liability. Discuss amongst yourselves.
But isn't, isn't the fact that it comes from, from a revolving fund mean that it's somehow tied to early education, therefore that money should go back into that type of...
It doesn't have to, doesn't have to.
Isn't that the point of revolving fund?
Where does the O P E V come? Where does, where are you gonna find money to fund your outstanding forty-three million dollar liability?
I'm saying that money might not even be available to put in O P E V.
Why wouldn't it be?
Because it's from a revolving fund. I mean, I don't know what the funds are, but...
So, so for example, like, we, we have some money in pre-K right now that we could transfer over. I feel very comfortable with that, because that money all the way along has been intended for that early elementary, so I'm comfortable in doing that. I'm not as comfortable in moving that into O P E V, but that's a personal, that's a, like, that's a personal thing for me.
So again, we have three hundred thousand dollars that we're gonna not use to reduce the budget this year. We're not gonna use it to offset O P E V. Is there something that says we cannot offset O P E V with some of that money?
I'd have to check with the auditor. I don't have an answer on that.
So I think we should.
Is that what you're thinking you would do?
What I'm thinking is, if we found three hundred thousand dollars and we know we have a forty-three million dollar liability, if we cannot use it for anything else, that's one thing. But if we can, I think we need to be a little bit more, we're putting a hundred thousand dollars into O P E V this year. Come on, guys! What's our ARC?
I don't know that ARC is a term anymore.
What is our annual projected expense? If, forget about what we've missed in the past. What would our, our expense be for next year? Do you know?
I don't know if that's gonna be...
If we were on a... And if not, let's just spitball it. Because it's well into the hundreds of thousands, if not...
It's like nine hundred thousand or something like that.
I mean, do you understand what I'm trying to say? Does this, am I making any sense? I'm not saying, don't do this, I'm saying, take a longer view. Two years is pretty accelerated, and some of those other districts that did it in two years had spent time, I mean, they were, like, to your point, they were, they were, their fee structure was...
Was different.
They recuperated the full expense of the program, we didn't. So, I mean, like, just think about this from a fiscal responsibility.
So it sounds, it sounds though, as this, this is a question of timeline, philosophically, we're pretty much on board with this, but the timeline of when this is gonna come, when this is gonna happen. And to your point, Lorraine, the ones that have done this in an accelerated timeline have sometimes even gotten, and I'm not suggesting this at all, but sometimes have gotten funding from local, the local-
Right, right.
And that certainly accelerates the whole process.
That's absolutely right.
So I agree that if we have this money available, we've got this looming, I don't even know what the word, thunder cloud, I mean, it's, it's, it's massive. But extending the timeline is what a lot, a lot of towns have done, they've done this in four, five years. And I think that, that, that still, that the intention of moving towards that is still there while being responsible with what we're doing with that found money. And, and I, I remember last week thinking, two years to set aside before year one implementation is, is very quick. Not that it was necessarily bad, but it's, it is, it is-
It's aggressive.
It's a very quick timeline.
Yeah, it's aggressive. Yeah. Maya?
Um, no, I mean, I, I, I agree, OPEB is scary and should keep everybody up at night. And if there, I understand the possible issues with the revolving fund, and obviously, springtime country will find out that answer. But I would, as much as, what I would like to see is like, that we have it tomorrow, and like-
Oh, yeah.
You know, universal K for a long time. But I also recognize, you know, that we need to maybe consider taking some of that money, if we can, and putting it towards OPEB, and having it take a little bit longer, as much as I'm the most impatient person in the world, and not just keep-
Well, this, I have to say, this, this administration and this committee has taken a massive step forward in saying, we want to do this. Okay, like, you guys remember all the years and years, and it's been, it's been brutal. This is huge that we wanna do this. I know you, you're looking at me like, you know, no big deal, but it is a really big deal. So kudos to the committee, but take us, take a breath and just remember what our, remember what our existing, we have a bill. We're holding a bill. And I'm not saying, don't put any money into anything else other than OPEB. I'm just saying, it's gonna catch up with the district at some point, and when it does, all of us are gonna pay for it. And the state's not gonna come in and bail out the Neshova Regional School District's forty-three million dollars. And the number's only going up, so I get it, we wanna do this, we wanna do the K, the universal K, but two years is accelerated, and I remember, wasn't it Littleton that did a five-year plan? I'm, I mean, I'm just suggesting that we take a little bit longer view. We're committing to it if we're committing to it. That's all.
I mean, the kindergarten thing isn't, I mean, a large temporary expenditure. I mean, it's, it's like a, almost like a one-time thing. So the fact that there's that three hundred thousand dollars, it seems almost like it, I don't know, like it was-
Well, a way, another way to look at that.
I don't know. I, I feel like, I, I under, I, I agree that I think we should, if we can, put more, like Elise said, put more into the OPEB. But to have that three hundred as seed money, or part of it-
Yeah, part of it, absolutely part of it, absolutely part of it, but-
I think it's like, I, I don't, to me, it's a no brainer.
I'm just disappointed that the discussion about OPEB really never came up around the table, and I, I don't know that people have a sensitivity for what that means. And so I'm not, I'm not punishing one program for another. I'm not. We have a forty-three million dollar bill.
Liability.
No, but every district does, every state does. Like, I think the most meaningful change we could make to OPEB is to go advocate for healthcare reform. Like, like, this isn't a prob, I don't ever see, I don't see how we can possibly ever make up the gap. I mean, we could put a million or two million in every year, but still take twenty to forty years.
You're gonna be paying as you go anyway, and you're gonna end up with a, a situation where it's gonna get to a point where you're gonna cut programs in order to do that. Is it gonna happen this year, next year? No. But you can either take a view of protecting the district, or you can say, you know what? We don't have to deal with it now, let's not deal with it, let's just get all these other programs in there. And then when you have all these wonderful programs that we all want, you're gonna have to start cutting, and you're gonna have to hand out pink slips. But Elaine, honest to God, I've not heard anyone say that the state's going to relieve any school district or municipality of their responsibility to fund the retiree health. It's just not gonna happen. We owe that money.
But they could make the universal kindergarten-
They could, and we're, and we're, and we're there. And if, and, and you know what? I mean, this is kinda like talking crazy stuff anyway, because we don't know. But even if they did say, we, we're already there, guys. So like, I don't know where the issue is.
From an investments perspective, though, if Desi, after we get past the gap here, if Desi is gonna kick in more than we were taking in in tuition, then we need to get over this hump, but it ends up being a net positive. I mean, I would much rather have the state be footing the bill than our families paying out of pocket.
A net positive, you're still paying at least that anyway, so how's that a net positive?
Well, Desi's reimbursement would be more than what our tuitions are paying, so I mean, we're still putting that-
So if your tuition's a million dollars, we're gonna get a million dollars?
No, the tuition right now is four ninety-four, and this year, rate, rate this-
What is the district paying?
The tu, oh, the, the, just go back, go back one more slide.
It was like five hundred and seven.
Five hundred and seventy-one thousand, I think it was, right there. But that, that number too, I just wanna point out, if I can just break back onto what Susan was saying, this number, because we lose money every year, will continue to grow. Every year, we will continue to lose more money, and, and, like, going the way that we are.
So there's some miss, there's some misunderstanding here. Either I'm misunderstanding it, or things are being twisted in a way that makes no sense. But there is not going to be a time, or is there, where we will not have to pay anything, and Desi will reimburse us the full amount?
No, that'll never happen, because it's always gonna be your chapter seventy, based on the assessments, just exactly what we're talking about earlier tonight.
Okay, so the state's never gonna reimburse you a hundred percent.
Not the full amount of the program, but if we charge tuition for a hundred percent of the program, we'd be charging ten thousand dollars a year for kindergarten.
We're, we're not talking about that, are we? Are we talking about that?
That's a possibility.
If you're talking about making it a net net, and that we don't, that the school budget doesn't pay for kindergarten, then, then, yeah.
We're not talking about that, I'm, I'm not sure where that's going to-
I was just talking about, Desi reimbursing being more than the tuitions that are paid.
Right, and that's correct, that's exactly what happened this year and potentially next year.
Over what the district already is paying?
Well, with our numbers, actually, Elaine, I'll take that back, it will be more next year. Cause we had them run the numbers.
So again, we're not arguing, discussing, debating, deliberating, universal K or no universal K. What I'm suggesting is, you take a longer-term view in order to relieve some of the pressure in a budget that we've got, I mean, we're showing crazy line items, like, okay, we're gonna give you back ten thousand dollars. Like, that's crazy! So if that's the case, take a longer-term view. Get what we need, get what we, get what we want, and then be a little mindful of the fact that we have a liability that I think we should consider funding as well. Steve?
Well, I think we have recognized the liability that we have with OPEB by increasing the donation to it in the last year, or the last year or two of budgets, okay? We took the ex, some of the excess amount we had at the end of last year, we put fifty, another fifty thousand dollars into OPEB. I agree with you that we should take a longer term. The three hundred thousand dollars that we may be able to find this year in revolving accounts, are you telling me we're gonna find the same amount of money next year in revolving accounts? No, that's gonna go away. So if we, if we take that three hundred thousand dollars, and remember, we're, we're, we're only in February right now. We don't know what it's gonna look like at the end of the year. If we take a hun, or if we say in our minds, and say at this table, that of the monies that are in the revolving accounts, we wanna take a one hundred thousand dollars this year and put it away in an account, a stabilization account, whatever you wanna call it, for, um, for the universal kindergarten, take another hundred thousand, add it to what we've already planning on budgeting this year for OPEB. Yes, we're never gonna get that forty-three million dollars in there. We're gonna have, but the lot more we build it up, over a period of time, whether it's twenty years, or thirty years, or forty years, that means the less drag there will be on our regular budgeting process to pay that million dollars, or the nine hundred thousand dollars a year we're doing. I would think, if we could do, if we could commit in our minds to do a hundred thousand dollars a year, to put it into a stipulate, stipulation account or whatever we wanna do it, knowing that, yes, fiscal year twenty-three, we will no longer charge tuition for, for it. We will have the backup money in, in the funds, and it'll probably end up being more than, having to be more than three hundred, four hundred thousand dollars, and from then, we go forward. But I, I agree with you that we have to take a longer period of time to look at it, two years. Even if we did three hundred thousand now, we're not gonna have that three hundred thousand next year to put, put in and make it in two years. So I, I, I think a year ago, or a year and a half ago, this committee said, yes, we wanna look at this, that's why we asked Brooke to do the study for us, and that we all felt that it was something worthwhile to add to our program. Yes, we have the liability of OPEB. Are we ever gonna play, uh, pay it out? Never. And not, not unless somebody dies, and, you know, someone like George Silverus dies and leaves us fifty million dollars or something like that. But I think we, we have to, we have to get in our mindset that, yes, we wanna do this, yes, we wanna do away with tuition for our, for our, and make it a universal K available to anyone, and, while available to our own people, our own communities, because we're not gonna allow people from outside got to come in the way we, I, I, you know, in, in the old, the open school. But I, I don't see why we can't do it if we think about it, plan for it, and have it in fiscal year twenty-three.
Are you opposed to saving that, like, last chunk for the first year of implementation? That last hundred thousand of the bill?
Cause I laid it out for a hundred thousand, I forget it. Yeah, a hundred thousand this year, a hundred thousand next year.
But, but spends like, um, it's late, I'm tired.
I know, please.
We could get the program quicker, but we would still owe while the program, like, the first year of implementation. Does that make sense? So if it's six hundred thousand, over the course of a few years, pay the five hundred, but then the year of implementation budget for a hundred thousand, to make it the gap.
And that's exactly what we were putting forward.
Right, but it sounded, it kinda sounded like-
Yeah, but not in two years.
No, I'm saying, like, like, would you be, would you be open to still, like, to adding a third year to the three years worth of tuition?
So that's two hundred thousand, that's two hundred thousand a year, right?
No, maybe for three years, twenty, twenty, what's?
Well, if it's a six hundred thousand dollars right now, that you need for seed money, if you're gonna do it in three years, that's two hundred thousand.
No, if you, if the balance when you start the, the last year, like she's suggesting is about a hundred thousand, that would be five hundred over three years. So that would be, that'd be less. Mental math.
It'd be five hundred thousand over four years.
No, three years gap, and then the fourth year of-
The fourth year, so she's just asking to extend it another year, that's all.
Add it to the regular appropriation, is what she's saying.
It's like a hundred and seventy, right?
Yeah.
I just think that's excessive, that's how many teachers, like, and you can't complain, I almost said a bad word. You can't complain when class sizes start getting bigger, and it's like, oh, we need more teachers, oh, but we can't afford it, but we've got this, two hundred, a hundred and seventy thousand bucks we're putting aside for three years. I mean, I get it, I get it, but-
How else can you see us getting it then?
Uh, what do you mean? I'm, I don't have a problem with you putting money aside, but I just think it's like, I just can't wrap my head around the fact that there's this really tight fiscal year, and oh my God, we have to tighten our belts, and oh, we can't have this, we can't have that, and we gotta cut this, and we gotta take that away. But we're gonna come up with a big, huge chunk of change, and I feel like we're shoehorning this program right now. That's what's bothering me, because even Ashland, how long did they take a long-term view on this? It's like, okay, we wanna do this, like, everybody, like, it's like, it's like we're twelve years old, and we gotta have our lollipop right now, right now! It's like, can't we take a three or four-year view of this? And maybe not.
But that's what I think you're hearing around the-
I'm hearing a hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
But I think what you're hearing is, can we spread this out over, over three, four, and not-
I heard three.
I do three, no, I'm suggesting the third year. What you're hearing, Susan's saying is four, and I think-
Are you saying four?
Yeah, but in the fourth year, the year of implementation, there's still a balance to be paid of a hundred thousand that had, would have to be budgeted.
So she's saying, the fourth year?
Yeah.
Understand that when you hit that fourth year, the five hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars now becomes six hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars, and it's from the budget.
Yeah.
And that way, we're introducing the program, we're introducing the program in four years rather than five years.
I-
What, what would be wrong with taking that fourth year if we, if we're, if we're allocating another hundred thousand? And then, as long as that value, that number exists, why not transfer that right to OPEB from, from every, every year thereafter?
Ooh, you guys would have to commit to that. I would love to see that, I, I would love to see that, but, and, and I would love it if, if a committee could be that disciplined. But what I've heard over the past several years, and you haven't said a word yet, by the way, is, well, why would we pay it when it's kinda like, it's so big, we're never gonna touch it, it's so far down the road? And that scares me, it's like, I'd love to say that, and that, that's up to the committee at the time, right? But I don't know that people would truly be that disciplined, cause there's always gonna be programs that we want. And that's been the challenge all along, is, why would we put this money aside when we could have something you guys want? Like, I would love to say, what's that?
Like kindergarten?
Like kindergarten, well, we're getting you kindergarten, we're getting us kindergarten, we're finally getting kindergarten! But I just want us to be fiscally responsible, that's it. So I could get behind the four years, and I would love it if we could align that with, but then, there's gonna be, you know, Bolton's having some kinda crazy, like, explosion of population here. Oh, what's going on? But, um, cause I had enough of this town. But I really think that we're, we're gonna start to see more and more requests for smaller class sizes. Cause we're like, gonna, in Bolton at least, I know you're not there yet, but you will be.
Well, the, the problem I have with kindergarten is, one of the things about it is, they're taking away choice. So if you want half-day, you have to go elsewhere.
You have to pay for it.
No, you have to go elsewhere.
You have to pay for it.
A half-day?
If you want it.
You're gonna go elsewhere.
Because, they're gonna have, because we won't be offering a half-day program.
But the numbers sort of suggest that they've got-
Right. I think most parents would probably, you know what, honestly, like, I put my kids in full day, I paid for it. We're not there anymore.
No, but you have there, you have stepping stones.
So I think, I mean, I think we've been talking about universal K for so long, and I do think it's the right thing to do, I just wanna do it responsibly.
And is that revolving fund, that's not just-
She's gonna find out.
That's a bunch of funds, right?
Yeah, we, we'll have to sit down and take a look and see exactly where we can draw it from. But I think the bigger thing is to ask the auditor to make sure, like, where else, if it can be used for something else, too.
So current tuitions right now go towards the current budget?
Right, yeah, but Lynn, we, we're in the hole every year.
Hold on, I'm just wondering, if, if we're in the hole, where the four ninety-four comes from, that's all.
Four ninety-four is just strictly the amount of tuition that we will receive this year for FY nineteen. Cause we, we did all of our scenarios based on the exact number.
So it has not been upsetting kindergarten?
Yes, it does.
Yes, it does upset kindergarten.
Half, approximately half.
That's exactly right, yeah.
I know you want it now, huh?
Well, I mean, I'm thinking back to-
If we had the money, I'd say, do it back now, like, September.
When my son was in preschool, they were like, by the time he's in kindergarten, we're gonna have free full-day K. And I know what the history was behind that, but, you know, I got an email to that effect and a letter. Um, and I, and I know, I know what the history is. But you have to think, this has been a conversation- But you have to think, this has been a conversation that we've been having in the community for a long time. You know, I mean, my son's going to be nine, you know, and like, this was when he was three, and I was like, oh, great, there's going to be free full-day kindergarten, that's fantastic! So glad I live. But it's been an ongoing conversation, I think, you know, we hear about it from a lot of parents, and-
But we're there, I think-
I'm glad that we're finally having the conversation, even though, yes, I wanted it yesterday, or tomorrow.
So, the question isn't, are we going to do it? I think it's pretty universal that we're going to do it.
It's the timeline, how do we do it in a way that doesn't blow up the budget and, you know, allows us to still put money aside for OPEB.
So, why don't we do this? So, why don't we come back to the next meeting? Think up, think on it. Everybody has a voice. Mine's a little louder than most, but, you know.
No.
But everybody's voice is equal, and we'll see where we land on this. Okay? Because I don't think we're going to be able to solve for it right now, and I think everyone's tired.
Is it two separate issues, though? I mean, is there, do we have to commit to actually doing it and then-
I think we have to commit to earmarking a dollar figure in the budget for this year. We can't commit a school committee three and four years down the line.
No, I'm saying, like, is it, is it like, you, we don't have a say in the programming. Like, we can't say we approve, you don't need our approval to start the program, right?
Yes, she does.
I do in this case-
It's the money.
Yeah, because I, and you can see, in all fairness, and I just want to go back, like-
Well, I mean, yeah, I, sorry, go ahead.
No, that's okay, I was just going to go back. You can see what the juggernaut was. The juggernaut is exactly what we're talking about right now. How do you get that money to start this thing, right? And so, I really need direction from the, the committee to say, first of all, yes, we want to do this, because it's a big shift for us, it's a huge shift for us to make. And then, B, yeah, let's start planning and say, what are we comfortable with? What do we feel is fiscally responsible? What's this going to look like? And then, and then I think we need, we need to be firm and stand behind that and say, you know what, this is what it's going to look like, and you can count on it, you commit to it, as a school district. But, but it, but that commitment will be there at this point in time, because I feel strongly that this group is going to make the decision, and we'll stand behind it, and we'll make sure that we do what we need to do to get there. That's, that's how I, so typical-
And if you create a revolving account for it or something, if you, if you-
Well, we actually can use the K account, we've already checked on that. We can use the currently, that's already in existent revolving one-
Oh, good.
As our vehicle. But I would also tell you that we just cleaned that up, because it had such an overage on it, because the program loses somewhat, or, well, I'm going to say, in this case, loses so much money every year that that program is in deficit. And so, we just cleaned that up in the last audit. So, we're in a really good, healthy place right now, because we're at zero in there right now, for us now to put money into that and start to use that as the vehicle.
I guess what I was asking is, what's stopping us from committing to actually saying we want to do it tonight? And then, I mean, do we have to have a timeline linked with that vote, or?
Well, well, first, well, first of all, I don't know-
Because we all sort of didn't formally voted.
You don't have to formally vote.
That's what I want.
Because you're not going to get K next year. What you, we need to decide is, how much money are we going to put into the FY '20 budget for this initiative?
Okay, so there aren't two separate things, then?
No, I think, I would agree with Lynn, or, sorry, with Lorraine right now. I think that her thinking is right at this point in time. I need direction to say, how much money do we need to set aside, either in the budget and/or are we doing this with the revolving fund, so I know what my starting point is.
So, you're going to find out about the 300,000.
Yeah.
We're going to go back and think, and then come back and decide, what, what, what kind of a view do we want to take on this? And how much money do we want to put aside for this year without over-engineering years two and three, or whatever, however many years there are? Like, it's, we want to do it in X number of years, we want to put X number of dollars away. Like, if we can just get to that next meeting, I think we'll be in a good place. And you guys have been great, sitting here, like, exhausted. So, can we just agree to do that? Lynn's not happy. Can we agree to do that?
Yes.
All right, because I think we're kind of past the point of anything more productive. Okay. Thank you, gentlemen.
Sean Ross, thank you so much.
Sorry that we didn't ask you any questions, but we-
Available if needed.
We still care for you! All right, we're going to move into subcommittee reports. Mr. Rubenstein.
A budget warrant, two minutes, two minutes, medium was held, the second, we reviewed the budget for the changes that were made, asked some questions answered, and are ready to move forward. Rubenstein.
Awesome. Thank you.
It would be nice, it would be nice to have our third member there occasionally.
Yes, she's coming. Personnel report, Kathy's not here, so Elaine, she asked if you would do it.
Oh, sure, okay. Yeah, we met a week ago to continue reviewing the manual, and we've been working on an FAQ section to kind of put some of the things that sound a little esoteric to put in plain language. And we've done a lot of work on, like, orientation-type activities, so that new members or people that are considering running could look at a document and really understand.
Here's what's, like, a here's what, coming kind of thing.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
Yeah. And so, we're just sort of continuing to work on that with the goal of bringing it to the Goals Workshop.
I just want to say, too, you, you guys are doing great work on that. Like, it's honestly, that, that, I really feel, and I think I mentioned this to Kathy, that that, that document at the end, when you're all done, will be a template for the state. I mean, honestly, the work that you're doing there is just fabulous.
I, I just had a quick question, because it affects a couple of language and some of the policies that we talked about today. Is it a handbook or manual?
It's, uh, school committee, what did I start it as? School committee manual?
Yeah, it does, it will say manual, okay.
It does, yeah, is it supposed to?
I don't know, it came up that maybe it was a handbook, and I wasn't sure, so I started changing to handbook.
It doesn't matter.
It's minor, but-
It doesn't matter. We could change it easier than you can, right? Once your policies are voted, so it's not a big deal.
It's, I was just a quick question.
But, no, no, what I'm saying is, whatever you, whatever you want it to be, it can be.
Okay, gotcha.
All right, she wants to move on. Do you want to do a policy update?
We met. Dorothy was with us.
I'm putting you on the spot, we can do it next time.
No, it's, yeah, we just started going over all those held policies, but we're getting close to-
Chipping away.
Yes.
Cool. And communication advisory, Elise?
So, Elaine and I met.
See, there's another one I missed.
Yes, also. We really wanted to tackle two things in our meeting, and one of them we tackled and